Colleagues, I'll just ask you to put your video screens on, please, for a moment. We'll just confirm attendance. I'd like to bring the Fourth Meeting of City Council to order, please. This is a virtual meeting held during the COVID-19 emergency. We would ask our audience to check with the city website for current details of COVID-19 service impacts. Meetings can be viewed via live streaming on YouTube and the city website. The City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for council, standing or advisory committee meetings and information upon request. To make a request for any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. I'll look for any disclosures of pecuniary interest. Counselor Lehman.
Thank you. I'll disclose Planning 2.8 and under that 2.5, which refers to a grant facade upgrade, specifically refers to commercial tenants in the Corps of which I am, so I will excuse them that.
So noted. Thank you. Any other disclosures? Counselor Turner?
I thank your worship. Just out of an abundance of caution, there's two items pertaining to the Middlesex London Health Unit. I'll declare conflicts on both of those. One is 8.1, number nine, which is 2.1 on the Planning and Environment Committee agenda. On the European Gypsy Moth, the Middlesex London Health Unit has provided guidance to the city, and I'm an employee of the Health Unit. And on item 8.4, number 12, on the Civic Works Committee agenda, 2.11, on the drinking water annual report, the Middlesex London Health Unit plays a regulatory role in the municipal drinking water systems, and I oversee the teams that provide this information on both these cases.
Thank you very much. Any other disclosures? Counselor Helmer?
Thank you. On item two of the Fifth Report of SPPC, this is item 3.1, related to the River Road Golf Course, I'll declare a pecuniary interest as my father is employed by the National Golf Course Owners Association, of which this city of London is a member.
Thank you. So noted. I'd like to declare, under Civic Works, 5.1 deferred matters, item four relating to 745, 747 Waterloo Street, as my family has a cupcake and chocolate shop in that location. I'm not aware of any other disclosures. Seeing none, we are now into recognitions. I'd like to call on Counselor Lewis, please.
Thank you, your worship. Colleagues, tomorrow is Pink Shirt Day, which started on February 24, 2007, in Nova Scotia, when two teenagers organized a high school protest to wear pink in support of a grade-nine boy who was being bullied and facing homophobic taunts and abuse for wearing a pink shirt to school. They went out, bought all the pink t-shirts and tank tops they could find, brought them to school, and handed them out to students as they entered the school in a show of support for their classmates. Pink Shirt Day has since spread across Canada to schools in all provinces and all grades, and this homegrown Canadian movement has also spread across the world to locations as diverse as Japan, Panama, and New Zealand. I am proud to wear my pink shirt tonight in solidarity with students at Bonaventure Meadows, Lord Nelson, JP Robarts, Prince Charles, Holy Family, St. Pius, Princess Anne, the Clark Road Trojans, and to all the students across London who will be participating tomorrow. And I encourage Londoners, whether at home, in their workplace, or at school, to wear their pink shirts in support of stopping bullying.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis. Colleagues, I have a recognition as well, if I might, please. And it relates to an event that was held very recently by the London Police Service with respect to the Woodman Explosion, where they had an opportunity to recognize the various areas of our city service and citizens who were involved. I'd like to be very specific tonight in reinforcing that initiative by acknowledging the London Police Service for their bravery, London Fire Department for their bravery, the Middlesex London Paramedic Services for their bravery, all of their staff who supported their efforts to deal with this tragedy, and the citizens who were involved. All of those efforts because of their commitment, and really bravery and grace under the most extreme of conditions save lives. As a result of that, I know that I speak for all of council and staff of city to say thank you to all of those who are involved, including our own city staff. So with all of those individuals who are involved in this, please accept our sincerest thanks. Colleagues, I've not been made of any other recognitions, so I will move us then to item three, and I'm not aware of any confidential matter to be considered in public, but I would ask, in terms of the confidential session, that we change the order of our motion required to move the closed session, and Fourth Report of Council into closed session after Stage 13 bylaws. I'll look for a mover for that, please. Counselor Lehman, seconded by Counselor Lewis. We'll call the question.
Counselor Van Meerebruggen, closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Thank you, colleagues. I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held on February 2, 21. Is there a mover, please? Counselor Van Meerebruggen, any comments or questions? Then let's call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Thank you. Colleagues, petitions, there are several communications. Two are related to item 10, 2.8 of the Third Report of the Planning and Environment Committee, the London Community Recovery Network. One related to item 10, 5.1 of the Third Report of Corporate Services, having to do with paid sick leave enhancements. Forty-five, including five added items related to item 12.12, 2.6 of the Second Report of Civic Works, having to do with sidewalks. Four, including one added, related to item two, 3.1 of the Fifth Report of the Strategic Priorities and Planning Committee, Policy Committee, excuse me, having to do with the River Road Golf Course. I'll look for a motion to refer those items to be considered with the items as mentioned. Do I have a mover, please? Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Van Meerebruggen. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
There are no motions to which notice is given, so I will now turn us to item eight. Reports, the Third Report of the Planning and Environment Committee. I'll look to the Chair, Counselor Squire, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. There are two matters that will need to be pulled for the reason of conflicts, but also in regard to item 10, 2.8, there was a split vote on some of the matters, so that will also be pulled. I'm not aware of any other matters where there's been requests to pull the items.
Does any colleague wish to have any other item dealt with separately? Counselor Squire?
I'll move the balance of the items, then.
Thank you. With the exception of those that will be dealt with separately, any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Counselor Hopkins, that's her.
Oh, I apologize, Counselor Hopkins. I see you there now. Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Squire. Counselor Hopkins, please.
Yes, thank you, your worship, for recognizing me. I do have a comment on number nine, which is 2.1, and that's the European Gypsy.
That item has been pulled, but Counselor Hopkins, we'll deal with that separately. Yes, it will be, I promise.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other, thank you. Any other discussion? Then we'll call the vote on those items.
Counselor Hopkins and Counselor Turner, this is everything except nine and 10. Counselor Hopkins? Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Thank you. Counselor Squire? Counselor Turner, did you have a query or comment?
I do, just as a point of order, your worship. It appears that the city's website and the agendas are all down. That becomes challenging to follow along in the playbook as we're moving, both for us and for the viewing public. I was wondering if we might be able to make an inquiries to the status of that. There's a warning on the website that says, "Due to technical difficulties, the meeting site's unavailable."
Let's ask the clerk.
We will get in touch with our eScribe friends, and I also know Communications is listening in, who perhaps they could look into it as well. Mr. Daly is also listening in, so I think we have three options for looking into that.
Thank you. Is that satisfactory, Counselor Turner?
Yeah, it's just going to be difficult to be able to read the items that we're debating about as we move forward, just because they're unaccessible. So I think we just need to keep that in mind, but this has happened a few times in the meeting, and this is incredibly challenging to be able to proceed appropriately and debate in full knowledge of what we're talking about.
Clerk?
I can advise that YouTube is up and running, stream is running. I can read out the items if that's of any assistance.
If I might, just for clarification, the ability to read the staff report on any of the items that we're debating, if we're going to make reference to the staff report, we can't do it because it's not there, unless we have paper copies, but we don't all have paper copies of the agendas. That's the challenge. I mean, one, for the public, it's easy enough that they can follow along in the discussion, but they can't follow along with what the staff report is. But for us, we're unable to make any reference to the reports unless we have them in hard copy.
Let's go back to the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did email them to councilors earlier, but we can certainly resend it to Counselor Turner. If that is of assistance.
I'll take a peek in the email part, but thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Squire?
I will put item 2.1, which is the 2021 European Gypsy Moth Proposed Management Plan, on the floor.
Comments or questions?
Your worship, this is Counselor Hopkins. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead, please, Counselor Hopkins.
I just want to give you an update. My other computer just crashed, so I've been able to get on. I cannot use my video, though, but I am able to use my audio, so if I can just proceed and just make a comment on the 2.1, European Gypsy Moth Proposed Management Plan. This is of great interest to residents in Ward Nine, and I just want Plan, this is of great interest to residents in Ward Nine. And I just want to thank staff for the plan moving forward and really look forward to working with staff, not only providing information to the community. I think that's going to be a very big part of this plan for 2021, but sharing information and educating the community as well, and how we can deal with the gypsy moth. We're in year three of a 10-year cycle. Hopefully, we're on the downward swing. But I just want to recognize staff for all the work that has gone into this plan. It's been an ongoing conversation for, like I said, the past three years. So just want to make those comments, and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Matt Holst.
Thank you very much. I'll speak to this item two, Your Worship. The Vermont Woods was dramatically affected last year, and there are many, many, many egg masses all over many, many trees this year. So the move to spray those, I think, is definitely necessary. And I hope it's effective, and we look to see that there's perhaps other strategies we can take on as well for that area, because residents are concerned about it. It could certainly be a big problem that spreads far. Thank you.
Thank you. So noted. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Lehman?
Yeah, the gypsy moth has been on Ward Eight's radar this summer. It's crossed over the river from Ward Nine, Byron. We are, as staff has reported, looking at a number of solutions. You know, spraying is a controversial one, and we will be doing that in city-owned lands. Just wanted to encourage the residents in all the areas that the other councilors have mentioned, and myself, my own area, to be vigilant and scrape those egg masses from your trees. It's not just a London problem. It's stretching up the Carolinian Forest, line all the way up to Lake Huron. Many communities are affected by this. And I fear next summer is going to be a challenging one as well. And hopefully, what the city staff, who have studied this in depth, trust me, I've been talking to them for a year now, their actions that they're taking and the actions that we all can take in our own private property will get us through this cycle, as Counselor Hopkins mentioned, and get us to the downward trend. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Counselor Turner and Counselor Kaibaka.
Madam Clerk, everything has come up here. I'll vote my recusal.
Thank you. Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen to zero with one recused.
Counselor Squire.
I am now prepared to put item 2.8, which is number 10, on the floor. That was the London Community Recovery Network Ideas for Action. There was a split vote at the committee with regard to the three items that required funding, with 1.3 a break in the clouds, and 3.5 providing better market data to attract new businesses, not receiving enough votes to... Five did pass the grant funding for facade upgrades. So I'll put that matter on the floor from two councilors related to the last item. So I'll let them introduce that at the appropriate time. And that's it for me at this point.
Thank you. I'll look for comments and questions. Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Your Worship. Time to introduce the amendment motion. The Deputy Mayor and I circulated this through the clerk to colleagues on Friday, and it's specific to the idea for action 3.5, the Provide Better Market Data to Attract New Business, because we did see the value in this proposal. But what we didn't see was the appropriate use of public dollars there. So in talking with staff, in talking with our BIAs, and both the Argyle BIA and the Hyde Park BIA were spoken to about this, we'd like to move that this be referred back to civic administration to develop partnership agreements with business improvement areas and other community partners to provide for enhanced opportunities through the partnership to access and gather existing and new data that could be made available to all involved partners, resulting in no new net cost to the municipality, and report back at a future meeting of the Planning and Environment Committee on this matter.
Counselor Morgan, you second? I'll let you say yes.
Yes, I do.
Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Lewis?
Your Worship.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to provide a little background on this. If folks are not aware, the City of London actually has a $20,000 a year annual subscription to a data gathering app with Enveronics to begin with. And I'm absolutely happy if we can find a way to leverage that into some enhanced data gathering by developing some partnerships. As I said, I don't feel like in good faith I can put just public dollars into this. When we are talking about recovery, the private sector does need to be... And this is an ideal spot for them to play that role. You know, the BIAs do have some funding they can put into this. We can also look to other community partners. The LEDC, for example, might be willing to partner with us on this as well. So I think that this is a motion that allows us to keep the idea in the hopper, gives the opportunity for our staff to work with those who are interested in having access to this data, and find a way forward that benefits everybody without putting an additional burden on the taxpayer.
Thank you. Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, Your Worship. And at committee, I supported all the items recommended in the report. But I will speak to 3.5 here. And as much as I appreciate Counselor Lewis and Deputy Mayor Morgan coming forward with a change, and I have great concern that if these items aren't supported, we may have lost opportunities within the year to take a look at these items that have come from the community stakeholders. So as much as I appreciate the compromise here, I am not going to be supporting this amendment. And I'll sort of give reasons why. One of the reasons, I think, splitting up and creating these different agreements with BIAs is, in some extent, going to take time. And it's going to create, for me, maybe a concern within each BIA. Some BIAs may need more data, other not so much data. So I'm not exactly sure how this is all going to be work. I don't think it's going to resolve the problem. We've heard from the BIAs, the importance of doing this. I am very supportive of the recommendation, and Enveronics, the analysis. We know already, we've been updated, that this can happen. And if there was a conversation at committee that maybe having our data turned off on our iPhones may not be the best way to do these things. And I know that there are other sources of obtaining data. And for us as a city to be smart, we need data. And if we do go over, there was the conversation with staff at committee, that we can also reach out to different BIAs to take a look at that. And that would be, I think, a good thing, that we've gone over data. Other municipalities that have done this have not exceeded their data. So we need data. And it's for the whole city. So I am very supportive about the recommendation. And as much as I appreciate a compromise here, and a solution to not have it sort of lose in terms of getting support from council and not being able to revisit this, I would encourage council to support staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Thank you. And I appreciate the comments of my colleague, Counselor Hopkins. But I would remind her that this did not make it through the committee. And so what Counselor Lewis and I are bringing forward is a way for us to actually continue to have the potential for this access to data, not just for the city, but for the other partner organizations like BIAs that may want access to it. Just to elaborate on what Counselor Lewis said on some of the background we did on this, we met with our staff, so we understand how the structure of the arrangement works. We understand the number of queries that we can do under the arrangement. We've also had conversations with a couple of the BIAs who have expressed an interest in this. If you note from the Civic or Corporate Services report a few weeks ago, there are a number of BIAs who have set aside money for COVID-related items and recovery costs. Certainly, there are a few who can afford this. And that's why the direction is to have our staff go back, have that conversation with them, and develop any necessary partnership agreements to acquire the data. Our staff may come back and say, this is the results of our investigation. We weren't able to develop a partnership agreement, but here's who was interested, here's who wasn't. And the city may actually have to chip in a little bit more to make this happen. But I think it's worth the investigation of our staff. I know that there are certainly interests out there. And I think if anybody has questions about the quality of the data, I think our staff would be very happy to answer that. I certainly think this is a worthwhile venture. And I think this is one of those examples, too, where the recovery is going to require us to do things in a creative way and to partner with other organizations. Here's an example of something where we partner and everyone benefits. And so I think this one's a win-win for both the city, who already has the existing relationship with the vendor, as well as those who could tackle on to that, chip in a little bit of cash and get access to some extra data. So this really could work well for everybody. I'd like to see council investigate it.
Thank you. Counselor Homer.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I wonder if someone from the city staff could weigh in if this matter was referred back to civic administration. What is the amount of time you think we would be waiting to line up who's going to pay for the service before we could actually use the service and get it underway? I know in the report, it talks about there being some work that needs to be done, regardless about exploring whether this particular solution is the right one. It seems like that has caught up a little bit since the report was written. Could you just weigh in on how much time will be required, and what kind of delay is being proposed by Counselor Lewis and Deputy Mayor Morgan?
I'm not sure. Perhaps I might start with Ms. Barbone, if you have some comment on that.
Through the Chair, I'm not sure, based on the specifics, if there was someone else that might be more appropriate to answer the question.
Thank you. I was thinking of Mr. Stafford, but perhaps we can get some clarity around that, please.
I believe it might be Mr. Barrett.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes, thank you. Through the mayor. The issue of timing, actually, this could still work. We're actually meeting with the BIAs on Friday. Some initial meetings are occurring then. And so we could probably have this wrapped up and be back in April if we needed to come back, or just to report on our progress. I think, as was noted by the Deputy Mayor, this action's a way to actually keep this initiative potentially alive. So we'll certainly, if council decides to refer back, we'll certainly move as quickly as we can to have those conversations with both our partners and clarify the relationship with Enveronics and the mobilescapes, and get back as quickly as possible. I think we could be back in April.
Counselor Homer.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I recognize that the Planning Committee decided not to go ahead with this idea. I was on Planning Committee for six years, and I do remember a few instances where Planning Committee decided one thing, and then council decided to do something else. It wasn't necessarily an amendment. I wonder, through the mayor, if Mr. Barrett could just weigh in. It seems to me like another way of handling this is to go ahead with what is approved, and then figure out the funding contributions afterwards to say, yeah, we're going to get this data. Let's get it, and you start using it now. And then if people want to contribute, I'd help cover some of the costs. We can figure that out later. And in terms of being timely in how we're acting, I'm interested in moving ahead quickly and not waiting around until we can wrangle out how everything is going to be paid for. We set aside money in the Economic Development Reserve Fund for these kind of initiatives, for this purpose, to avoid having to figure out how to pay for things. So I like the idea of having some other contributions to cover these costs, but I don't want it to hold things up. So in terms of the other alternative, is go ahead now and also have discussions about contribution agreements, and whether people want to contribute to cover some of those costs. And would that make any difference on the ground in terms of when we'd be able to use the data and benefit from its value?
Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, through your worship. In our initial report, we said that we'd be up and running in one to three months, so this would still allow us to do it within that timeframe.
Counselor.
Okay, well, given that, I think I'll support the motion that's from Counselor Lewis and Counselor Morgan. You know, it doesn't seem like it's going to really result in a significant delay. I think we need to move ahead with this kind of idea. I think getting some information about what's actually going on, you know, relatively close to how people are actually behaving, is really going to be very helpful. And this is the kind of investment that I think actually could really help people understand how consumers are adapting. I think it's got a lot of value. And so when I look at the variety of things we're talking about spending money on, I think this one is one of the best value-your-money ideas out there. If it's not going to hold it up, to see if there's ways to have some partners contribute some costs, I think that's fine. I will tell you, as a board member of the Old East Village BIA, we're not sitting around with a whole bunch of extra money. That's not the situation that the BIA is in, nor has it ever been in that situation. And the BIA is really struggling right now to deal with all the issues that are happening in the pandemic, and to support the businesses that are trying their very best to stay afloat. So the idea that we would go find some extra money and make it available for this, I think, is a little unlikely. And I think this is the kind of thing we should be using Economic Development Reserve Fund money for. So I'll support the amendment, because it's not going to result in a long delay. If we're on the timelines, Mr. Barrett is on, I think it's fine.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Then we'll call the vote.
Counselor Hillier? Counselor Hillier? I will mark him as absent. Close the vote and the motion carries, 12 to 2.
Thank you. Counselor Squire.
So the remaining matters, there are three different matters. I know there was a split vote in a committee. They were called separately. So it asks that the same occur at council, and perhaps we can deal with the matters in order in terms of voting now that one has been amended, Mr. Chair. So the first matter will be, I think, the, I want to keep pulling it, A Walk in the Clouds, because that was a movie that I once watched. But I think it's a break in the clouds is the first matter. So if we could deal with that one first.
So whether it's a walk or a break in the clouds, that is open for discussion. Counselor Lewis?
Sorry, Worship, not for discussion, just as a point of order. That did not pass committee, so that's not actually on the list before us. So would that not require an amendment to come forward to bring that back, as it was defeated at committee?
That is correct.
Your Worship, I have my hand up.
Go ahead, Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, so I'm kind of confused here. If you could... If you could, your worship, explain the process here. I thought like any committee, when we have recommendations going to council, we can revisit and have that discussion and vote at council. But if I can get clarification on the process here?
Thanks very much. What we need to do, since it was defeated at committee, is to have a motion to consider a course of action with regard to that.
I would like to make that motion then.
Okay. Do you have a secondary for that?
Counselor Turner?
Counselor Turner, thank you very much. Let's open that up for discussion.
If I can proceed, your worship?
Go ahead, Councilor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you. And I would, I am very supportive of all the items that were presented to us at, at Planning Committee. And I, I'd just like to start off with my understanding of the London Community Recovery Network. I did sit on the community table. And one of the, the understanding that I had at, at the community table was that I was there facilitating, listening to the community and to the stakeholders. Items coming forward, they were vetted through staff. And they've come to us now with the opportunity to look at applying some dollars or not. But I have confidence that the, the items that have been recommended to us have been, have gone through that process. And I guess to start off, I would like to thank staff for all the work and organization that took place in, in, in these working groups. And also to the community and to the stakeholders to bringing their thoughts and ideas. And I'm going to speak to the break in the clouds, 3, 1.3, and the reasons why I supported it. And this is a recommendation that came in, highly recommended, that opportunities for investments up to $100,000 would be available to BIAs. And Old East and downtown were the two BIAs that had, that based on studies that were done, 80% of the businesses and restaurants would have qualified for this program. And that to me is something that speaks loud and clear. If we were going to take a look at the 20% and, and, and dole out that money to all the BIAs, we would need planning amendments, we would need a CIP, and that would take some time. And that would be just for that small amount of, of businesses and restaurants that would qualify for this program. So that is, is really important to understand that you have to be applying, you have to meet the criteria to apply for this investment. Secondly, there was a conversation at committee that we had about businesses that have already invested in patios, furniture, equipment. And it, I understand, and at that time, it wasn't very clear, but I understand now that it is retroactive. You can go back to the BIAs and there are those opportunities. So for me, I would encourage committee to support this. I have heard loud and clear that we need to support our downtown and our investments as we move forward. And, and it's something that Londoners want to see happen. It's happening in other municipalities that are going out and investing in, in businesses and restaurants in particular and supporting them. And I would like to see that happen in London, especially when the ask has come from the community and the businesses. So I would encourage all of us to support a break in the clouds.
Thank you. Counselor Squire?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. There's a number of these matters coming to council tonight. I, I'm going to try to, to apply the same approach to all of them that I would, I applied at the committee that I was co-chair with at, with Councilor Palozza. And we were very clear that the things we were doing had to, that were brought forward had to be COVID-specific. They had to relate specifically to the COVID issue and the repercussions of it. So as co-chairs and the two other members of the committee, we were very clear about that. And anything that came forward, although it may have had a very legitimate business purpose in the long run, where it was not related to COVID, we set the parameters as, as the, the chairs, that, that we would not be going forward with those. And we appreciated the amount of money involved. We came forward, in fact, with five proposals only. Only one has made it through. I checked with Councilor Palozza today. Only actually one of those made it through the cut to the next level. I was very apprehensive about getting involved in this process. And I, I was really worried that, that the undertakings I would be giving to the committee members, that their proposals would be taken seriously, that, that I would do my best to get funding for them because they were COVID-related would work out. And unfortunately, it has not worked out that way for me. And I will be very hesitant, quite frankly, to get involved in a process again where only one of five ideas from a broad base of people don't make it through. So that's sort of the opposite to what Councilor Hopkins is talking about. I knew when I, when I volunteered, I said, Phil, don't do it, don't do it. You know what happens when you get involved in these things? I took a chance. It was not a good experience and I won't do it again. Now let me just say this, here's what I'm going to, here are my criteria for, for my process. I appreciate fully that the people that are most affected by COVID have been those of us, those of us in our community who are most vulnerable. People living on the streets, people who have service-related income based on earning tips. Many of them have lost their jobs and are running out of money. The service industry itself and the small businesses that have relied on SERB up till now and who, up till now, are coming to a point in time where their businesses are barely hanging on. I also want these things to help everybody. I don't want them to be limited to a particular area, be it downtown or Old East Village. So what's my perspective? My perspective is a bungalow restaurant that isn't in a business improvement area in North London that pays out $28,000 to the City of London before they even open their doors in taxes, garbage disposal and parking fees. That's who I'm thinking about. I'm also thinking about those in our, in my community who have bought homes and have put their, their energy into, into, into making those homes work and being able to pay their mortgages. And now they are on the edge with where we are doing now. What does this walk in the clouds do? It, 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 a break in the clouds, sorry. What does it do? First of all, it excludes the bungalow restaurant. The bungalow restaurant can't get any money out of this plan. They're not in one of the BIAs. How does it help other people in my community where restaurants have capital? Many of them have already invested in patio furniture and that's great. So is the bungalow restaurant. So did they expand their, their patio to meet the COVID crisis. So these are the criteria that I'm going to apply going forward. So I don't feel, quite frankly, that I, as a Ward 6 councillor, that I have to go forward with every proposal that went forward where it is not in the best interest of the community that I represent. So I cannot say yes to this one.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, your worship. I voted no to this item at committee. And I'm going to be consistent and vote no to it again tonight. I don't want to repeat too much of what Counselor Squire said. But I will say, when we're excluding the Black Pearl in Ward 7 or the Dog House in Ward 12, or Fireside in Ward 14, or the Malibu in Ward 2, all the restaurants in this city have been hit hard by COVID. The fact that the service sector and the restaurant sector in particular has been hit hard is not unique to downtown. It is not. And this is, at the heart, supposed to be the London Recovery Network, not just the downtown. And that's not to say that downtown doesn't need some extra help because downtown had some problems before COVID started. And downtown is a really key component and economic driver to our community. But I cannot say to the restaurateurs in my ward, we're subsidizing patio furniture in downtown, you're on your own. And look them in the eye in good faith and say, that's okay, because it's not. I am more than happy if we were saying, you know what? Let's send this back to staff and see what we can do to help get out of the way of regulatory barriers, waive fees for patio permits, those kind of things, if it was being applied across the city. But it's not. That's not what's before us today, so I will be voting no. And I encourage others to do the same, be fair to all the wards.
I did not hear a referral in that specifically, so I will ask for any other comments or questions. Counselor Turner?
Thank you, your worship. I was interested in where the debate would go because I didn't get a chance to see it at PEC. But it's, it's an interesting item. I, I think what's being proposed is rather reasonable here. One lens and way to look at this is from an equity lens versus an equality lens. We don't need to provide the same opportunities for everybody. We need to be able to target them. When we take a look at a lot of our financial incentives, they are very prescriptive and very targeted. They're not available to everybody. The facade grant program's not available citywide. There's, let's say, brownfields are available where there's a brownfield. It's not available to places that are greenfields. We, we target things because, and especially when we take a look at something like the development charge subsidies that we have. We do those in very specific areas because we're trying to bolster a very specific sector in a very specific place. Old East and, and downtown, I think we're disproportionately hit hard, especially in the restaurant industry. One of the challenges is that we need to, we have a very significant investment already in the core. And we, we risk losing a lot of that and a lot of the, the ground that we made with the investment that we did. And there's a synergy that's associated with being able to get feet on the street again. And so if the restaurants downtown and the core and in Old East are able to get more people there, then the spin-off effect on not only the restaurants, but also the bookshops and also the, the small curiosity shops or whatever it is, the market, all of those benefit from an investment associated with these restaurants. Restaurants that stand alone elsewhere in the city don't necessarily share that same synergy. And, and I can appreciate, I can appreciate the arguments from Councilor Lewis and Counselor Squire that, that it doesn't seem fair to the, those other restaurants. But that, that's not how we apply programs in this city. We are very targeted and very strategic, and I think this is one of those things. So I'm very supportive of what was put forward here and I'd encourage my colleagues to support it as well.
Thank you. Counselor Homer?
I think Counselor Kaiba was up before me there.
I'm sorry, I did not see Counselor Kaiba's name, but go ahead, Counselor Kaiba, then we'll recognize you, Counselor Homer.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I would let Counselor Homer go first as I'm experiencing a little emergency right now in my house. Thanks.
Counselor Homer?
Okay, first, just a couple of questions, one through the mayor, two staff, maybe it's Mr. Barrett. What kind of expenses would be eligible for this kind of program as it's envisioned? Would this just be for, you know, future patios and things that people might be doing as the pandemic continues to affect people? Or is it for the work that people have already done in the past to, you know, set up new patio setups when they're trying to adapt to the impact of, of COVID from March to now?
Mr. Barrett, do you want to give a go at that?
Certainly. Thank you, through your worship. First off, I think it's important to note that, that the intent of this program was that it was to be delivered through the BIAs. As councils aware, municipal councils specifically precluded from making grants or loans, except for the purposes of community improvement. We didn't want to get into a CIP program for this because it was intended to be a COVID response and that would take a lot of time. So working through the BIAs as a means of having those folks implement the programs was the way this was intended to go. The answer to your question though, as to what would be eligible, it was intended that this would be able to cover the costs of things associated with the, with the Sidewalk Boulevard patio. So it would be the furniture, any planters or boundary demarcation, things that were required. This is the sidewalk patio program, so it's the boulevard. It's those, it would be for those businesses that require the boulevard agreement with the city in order to locate their patios in the public right-of-way. The notion of the retroactivity, in fact, was one that we discussed with the BIAs when this first came forward in the sense was that, yes, businesses that had made that investment last year as a result of the COVID, that they could be eligible for this. As it relates to the funding, you'll note that it, this was a one-time ask of, for $100,000, $100,000. So again, depending on how we worked that program or the BIAs worked that program, that could be up to 50 patios if they wanted to give them a $2,000 grant or it could be 20 patios if they were going to give them a $5,000 grant. So those details, as we noted in the PEC report, were to be worked out. But that was what the, the notion of this program was. It was to deal with the equipment and the things to support the sidewalk patios, working with and through the BIAs and then the possibility that with the BIAs, it could be retroactive to those who had gone through this expense last year.
Counselor Homer?
Thank you. So I would encourage my colleagues to support this initiative. I think doing what we can as a municipality to support some of the businesses that have been most impacted is worthwhile, even if we're not able to do everything. You know, the city is limited in how we can intervene. You know, we can't get into situations of bonusing. You know, we're not the provincial government, we're not the federal government. And those levels of government are doing things that hit all kinds of businesses that are providing all kinds of different services in the community. And I think that what they're doing is very appropriate. And what I want to say is that they are doing basically all they can to support people through the pandemic. And I am not interested in nickel and diming people and pulling back and saying, well, I, I got questions about this or, you know, it doesn't benefit people in my ward, so I'm not going to support it. I think that is fundamentally the wrong approach right now. We need to be thinking about what can we do as a city to support people who are going through this pandemic and then do as many of those things as we possibly can, all of those things. Some of them are going to be great ideas, they're going to work out really well. Some of them maybe are not the greatest idea, but they're going to still help. And that's what we need to be doing. Like, you know, this is a huge, huge problem. People are really, really struggling. And I don't think that this is the right way to approach it. I know colleagues are going to have different ways of making these decisions. And I can imagine, you know, if you're in an area where there's no CIP and there's no way to act in this way to support restaurants that are impacted in, in basically the same way as restaurants in Old East Village or downtown are. But there's a huge density of these businesses in the core, like an absolutely huge density that have sidewalks and it did set up patios. And, you know, helping them out with some of the costs for that, it seems like the smallest thing we could do to help them with a really big problem. So I think this is one of these situations where we need to think about the overall city, what is needed in the core specifically? How can we help these businesses that happen to be in a CIP area and have these situations, have already made these adaptations? Is there a way that we can help them out with some of the costs? It's not going to go that far. Honestly, $100,000 is not going to cover all the things that have been done by all these different businesses. But it will help them a little bit. And I'm interested in making sure we, we can help them out a little bit. So I hope colleagues will, will go along with it, even if they don't think it's the greatest idea or recognizing that it's not going to support businesses that are in the same industry in their, in the words that they represent because they recognize that it is going to help some businesses and it's going to cover some of those costs. And it's something that we can do now. Now, I think the, the last thing I want to end is that we need to be timely in what we're doing and help people out with, with these things as we can do it. And we've taken a long time, frankly, to get to this point. So I think now is the time to act and to help people out with these costs.
Thank you. I noted Counselor Kaiba was back on screen for a moment. Counselor Kaiba, do you wish to comment on this?
Yes, I just wanted to, to just, I, I don't want to drag on the conversation as many of my colleagues have already made the appropriate comments. And I do apologize, I had a little emergency in my house, my son fell, so I tend to him. But one of the comments that I, I wanted to add into the conversation that I, I maybe, on top of what Counselor Homer just said is, like, he said that we need to support people in.
I think you're frozen there, Counselor Kaiba. I think you're frozen there, Counselor Kaibaga.
Everything that we can to support people. And as we, and I don't have, I don't want to drag on the conversation. Many of my colleagues have already said what I wanted to say. But yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We hope your voice is okay. Counselor Lemon.
Thank you, your worship. You know, as Counselor Squire said, the comments that I'm going to make are going to be consistent throughout this whole process. Because it will kind of touch on, kind of where I'm coming from in this. It's not nickel and diming. It's, it's a hundred thousand dollars here, two hundred thousand dollars there, two hundred thousand here. And at the end of the day, it's going to add up to, you know, around a million plus. You know, this is a COVID recovery plan. It's not a downtown recovery plan. We've, we've addressed the downtown and the issues and continue to with considerable financial support. So I looked at, at this particular one as being very specific, very specific in the area that it applies to, even though COVID has affected businesses throughout London and not just restaurants, but all businesses. It's also very specific in what businesses can do with the money. You know, there's a, a business might say, boy, I could, I could use some help in, you know, getting some new cutlery or help with my hydro or help hiring another staff. I don't, my patio is not going to work for me. I don't see that that's the best investment of the monies available. You know, that's where governments can get into trouble when they start to becoming, become very specific in, in their financial help. You can see the province and the feds have been very generic in, in their financial assistance. They've, and through grants and loans, have not specified where money is to be used other than the wage subsidy. I voted against this at, at committee and I will vote against it now. And I will be not supporting some other measures that we're going to talk about tonight for this reason. I don't see a hundred thousand dollars spent on patio furniture right now as the best interest for the London taxpayer. And it's very specific to a small subsection of businesses affected by COVID. And if you're going to get down to restaurants, restaurants in a very specific area. And I, I don't think that's fair or a wise investment on the city's part. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Van Hulst.
Thank you, your worship. There's, I guess, many perspectives when looking at a decision like this. I'll note that my own ward has some restaurants. I have a CIP and a BIA and some of those restaurants in the CIP and BIA have a patio. This is not for them. However, the, the first thing I want to do is respect the people that went through all the work to put these things together. This is a very long process. It wasn't an agile process, but we spent a long time with the London Recovery Network and people gave it their best. And I'm, you know, I'm inclined to honor them by, by supporting the measures that, that we came up with in the end. I would also note that although it may not seem fair that only these two areas get the patios or the patio incentives, there is the opportunity to have many, many patios in there. So it becomes an, an attraction in itself, knowing that if I go downtown as opposed to a particular location in one ward or the other where there's one restaurant with one patio, I know for sure I'll be able to sit at a patio somewhere. And like many businesses that, of a similar variety that locate themselves together, I, I think this, this could work and be valuable in that way. So I think I'll support this and I'll wish the BIAs and their restaurants well. And hope we can, I hope my colleagues will, will do the same. And I think those people who spent the time on London Recovery Network will, will appreciate that, that we, we, we honored their work by coming up, by spending the money that we, we said was available. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from colleagues? Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Um, yes, I have a couple of questions. Um, I don't know if Mr. Barrett or Mr. Kosovis's team is best to respond to this. I'm looking at the item in the report and I'll, I'll tell you, there are parts of this that, that I very much like. I, I like the idea of us getting out of the way from a regulatory's perspective and continuing to get out of the way to allow businesses that time to recover. Frankly, the sidewalk patios or patios in parking lots, I think the issues are very similar. In different parts of the city, yes, there are areas that have constrained limited seating inside, but there are other areas that have limited seating simply because of the restrictions that have come into place under COVID. And we don't know where that's going. We don't know if that will be a similar situation in the summer. And I think there is merit in some of the comments about, you know, looking for some citywide support. So in the report, it mentions that we're currently waiving the citywide, basically licensing agreements and application fees for patios. And I wanted to ask if that's true through 2021? And does that apply to both sidewalk patios as well as other patios, say, in parking lots or on private property?
Let's start with Mr. Barrett if he's got an answer for that.
Thank you to the chair. Yes, we're actually bringing forward a proposal or we have already brought forward the proposal and we are waiving the fees. That was part of the pandemic response and it came to the back to business. So that, that's ongoing. Some of the other initiatives that we're doing is coming forward with a citywide zoning bylaw amendment that would allow the temporary patios on private property. As the deputy mayor noted, this is specific to the boulevard cafe. So these are the, we call them the sidewalk patios, those patios that require the licensing agreement with the city to use the sidewalk patios. It's not the patios that are provided or placed on private property. They don't require that same process of the licensing agreement. But so those, there, there aren't those same fees associated with those.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. So there, there are currently no fees for either of those categories right now and that continues through 2021. Is that correct?
Mr. Barrett?
That's, yes, sorry, that's correct through, through your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
And Mr. Barrett, one of the concerns here was where this applies to. And I know that in your report, you talk about using the downtown and Old East Village BIAs to create and administer this program. As Counselor Van Hulst noted, you know, there are other BIAs that have similar situations. Is there a reason that this wasn't contemplated in all of the BIAs areas? Particularly given that there's probably not a lot of components in the city where the sidewalk would be required because some of the BIAs I know in my ward would have, you know, parking lot space available to them, which it sounds like we're being permissive on anyways. So is there a reason that this wasn't contemplated citywide for all the BIAs we have?
Mr. Barrett?
Thank you for your worship. Yeah, there were a couple of reasons. Number one is again, we can't make grants or loans outside of a CIP area. So we would be working with the BIAs. The reason why we were focusing on the Old East and the downtown BIAs is because, and I think Counselor Hopkins noted this. And again, just to clarify, this is related to the boulevard, the sidewalk patios, right? So these, those that, that require that licensing agreement with the city, eighty percent of those are within the downtown and Old East Village BIA. So that was the reason why was that eighty percent of those. I have a map which I'm not able to share with you, but we did plot these out. And some of where those other sidewalk patio agreements are, are not within areas where BIAs exist. And some of them are, but you know, I mean, certainly if it was the will of council, we could, we could open this up to the other BIAs. The BIAs is the key. It's having the ability to work with the BIA as the means of delivering on this program.
Deputy Mayor.
So you're saying that the other BIAs could be involved where necessary on a program like this, even if they don't have a CIP because the BIAs could take over basically the funding of the program? Is, is that correct or are you saying that that's not possible?
Mr. Barrett?
No, through the mayor, we, we would, we would work with the BIAs. The, the BIAs would be able to be the folks who we could work with. That's my understanding is that we'd be able to do that. Again, though, limiting this or the, the intent is that it's limited to the sidewalk cafes. There won't be that many, but certainly it's something we could work with those BIAs where there may be sidewalk cafes.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, so I, I think that, and I don't know if this, this gets anybody else to a place where they're more comfortable with this. It seems to me that there isn't significant barriers. There may be, you know, an additional cost to including at least the other twenty percent if they have BIAs in the area that have boulevard sidewalks. Because you said eighty percent of the businesses are covered by the two BIAs mentioned in the report. It doesn't seem to me like there's a lot of barrier to opening this up a little bit and I don't know if that changes our colleagues. Do you have any sense on what the additional cost would be, Mr. Barrett? Or I know I'm putting you on the spot here, but I know that the, the a hundred thousand dollars is basically just a budget. Do you think that you could work within that budget or would you require additional budget if it was opened up to the other areas?
Mr. Barrett?
Through, through your worship. The budget that we put forward was one, as I said, we calculated that based on, we could do, again, in consultation of the BIAs. For a hundred thousand dollars, you'd be able to do fifty projects at, if the value of the grant was two thousand dollars or you could do twenty projects if the value of the grant was five thousand dollars or you could do some combination in between. So we did just based on what we thought was a reasonable number of projects. If, if council thought that by opening up the potential for potentially twenty percent more and you wanted to provide that same opportunity, then I, I don't know, you might want to consider twenty percent increase in the budget. But we didn't, it would, the, the way we did the budget was, was on the number of projects and, and that what could be the potential value of the grant.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I understand your point. So basically, opening it up to other areas would, if you didn't increase the budget, would just mean the projects would, might be spread out in a slightly different way. But given the concentration in the Old East and downtown, there would still be heavily concentrated in the downtown area. I wonder, I, I think I would like to investigate this by putting an amendment on the floor to open this up, but keep the budget the same to the other BIA areas as Mr. Barrett has mentioned. If there isn't a secondary, I'm fine with that. I don't usually do things on the spot. But listening to the debate, there seems to be some merit in the program, but I know that there were some questions about opening this up to other areas. So I'm willing to take a shot at that and see where it goes. I, I don't have language. I apologize clerk, because I'm basically working based on others' comments. But I'd like to propose that we open this up to the other, the other BIAs in the city to see if they are willing to participate in the program.
And to be clear, Deputy Mayor, you're talking about keeping the budget at one hundred thousand dollars or you're talking about changing that in proportion to? What are you suggesting?
I think keeping the budget the same is fine. I mean, someone can amend that later if they want. But I, if there's no support for opening it up, then there's no sense in talking about the budget, I don't think.
I think you have a secondary, Counselor Van Hulst. So with that, let's talk to that. I'll take speakers for that, please. The amendment, clerk, I'm not sure if we've been able to net that into an amendment. Do you want to, does anyone need clarif, clarity around reading that out? Clerk? Okay, we do have it. It will be put into eScribe for your, your viewing pleasure. Let's call Counselor Hopkins.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I have a quick question through you to staff. And my understanding when I was looking into this was that if we opened it up to the other five BA, BIAs and I would like clarification here to make sure I understand what we're doing here. If we open it up to the other five BIAs, then we are increasing it to ninety percent because not all businesses will be able to qualify for this. So we're going to be increasing it to ten percent as opposed to eighty percent of qualifying businesses. And I, I just want confirmation on if that's what we're doing.
I'll take it back to the mover of the amendment in terms of intent. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, my intent would be as permissive as possible, given the restriction is that it needs to flow through a BIA. So I think Mr. Barrett would have those numbers more so than I would, whether it's ninety percent or, or some other number. It's definitely more than eighty.
Mr. Barrett, did you want to add some clarity to your prior comments with regard to the percentage?
Through the chair, I'd like to, but I, I can't. I, we just, we just did a quick analysis just to show. I, I got a copy of the map here, but I don't have all of the BIA boundaries. So I could, I could certainly provide that. But as Counselor Hopkins noted, it, it might go that it's ninety percent of the sidewalk permits instead of eighty percent. I'm not too sure what the, what the real number is, but it's probably closer, closer to that. The way I understand the, the counselor's motion, all we're doing is that it would be the very same program, but the way the business case is structured right now, it says in collaboration with the downtown and Old East Village BIAs, a patio materials grant program would be established and we would change that, that it would be in collaboration with. And we would list all of the BIAs, but other than that, all other intent and, and outline of the program would remain the same.
Mr. Barrett, your understanding is, is correct. I would bring colleagues' attention to the eScribe amendment that a break in the clouds be amended by including all BIAs in London to be eligible to participate in the proposed, proposed program. There was no reference to changing the financial figures. Counselor Hopkins? Counselor Hopkins, any other comments you'd like to make?
No, that was just a question I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. So I'll support the amendment. I would have supported the main motion. I understand the concerns. You know, we do focus a lot on downtown, but that's because of what downtown is and downtown is important to the entire city. We've invested a lot in downtown and, and downtown and Old East Village. The core area in general both have been hit particularly hard by COVID. I am, I'm, I was on the, the working group that spoke about addressing the issues that are faced by London's most vulnerable. So we, we did talk about all of those issues and how COVID has affected London's vulnerable population. When we talk about people being out of work, one way for people to get out of work is if their employer loses their business. And I know a number of businesses across the country have been lost because of COVID and the challenges and the, the lockdowns and, and all of those things. And even as we open up, right now we're in the red zone and each restaurant is quite limited in their capacity, how many people they can have inside. And so they have to weigh that balance. Are, are they actually losing money by opening? And so I, I, I don't envy these small business owners and the dilemmas and the, and the challenges that they are facing. And I agree with Counselor Morgan and the comment he made about the regulations and the fees and all of that that we have in place. And I too was glad to see some of the things that have been done to make it easier in general for restaurants to have patios. And, you know, as COVID was, as the weather was starting to get colder in London, it, I was glad to see patios, some patios staying open. Because, you know, when you consider in different places in this country, there are businesses that build their business model around making their bar or their restaurant or their hotel even out of ice. And so, and they attract tourists to those destinations. So if people are willing to go to a place specifically that is cold, the, the furniture is made of ice and the, the vessels are made of ice, then I think Londoners would be willing to support their local pub or their local restaurant outside in the cold with the appropriate outdoor wear. And if that patio, you know, can afford to put those heaters and those, and, and whatever furniture they need to, to have that. So, you know, I, I get the, the message about equality, but I also agree with Counselor Turner that a lot of our, our, our programs and our, our policies are targeted. And it's not about fixing everything in one fell swoop. It's about chipping away at our problems little by little and doing what we can. So I will support and I will support this amendment. I do like the amendment. I do like the amendment, and I would have supported the main motion, and I will if this amendment fails.
Thank you. Counselor Van Holst?
Thank you, worship. And also my thanks to the deputy mayor. This is a gracious amendment and certainly includes more of the businesses. So at least people don't feel left out by this. And I think we'll have an opportunity to see the kind of uptake is there. Maybe my question through you to our staff is, how will we, as a council, hear back on how this program has been received and utilized?
Mr. Barrett?
Through the chair, in the business case, we've got metrics, so we would be able to report out on the uptake on this program, in working with the BIAs and what, in fact, the take-up was for the grant.
Counselor?
Okay, thank you very much. Well, anyway, I see this as a pilot project for dealing with recovery. And I'm glad to see that it might extend to some of the other areas of the city because that will give us, you know, more broad data on how well it works. So I would encourage and ask my colleagues to support this. I know it'll be received well from the Hamilton Road BIA and some other BIAs also.
Thank you. Counselor Squire?
With regards to the amendment, I will support the amendment because if it's passed and the main motion is passed, we're going to help more restaurants and bars. We're going to help more people. And I don't want anything I said to be interpreted as not wanting to help restaurants and bars. However, in Ward Six, the ward that I represent, there are no CIPs. There are no business improvement areas. And I am challenged that we are doing a program to help small businesses that is designed, that it's only going to apply to those groups. And that is a challenge for me. And it would be a challenge with any program that was brought forward in terms of this issue. And it's just very, very difficult for me to go back to the area I represent and say, you know, I helped out a lot of people tonight. None of them were you, but I helped out a lot of people. That's a tough one for me to do. So I'm gonna, I'm probably gonna stay with where I am on the main vote. But I'm grateful if we're able to help more bars and restaurants. I am all for that.
Thank you. Counselor Elmer?
Thank you. I think the expansion proposed by the deputy mayor is a good idea. I would like to move an amendment to that, though, that we increase the budget to 120,000 so that we're not diluting that funding across many more recipients. And instead, you know, we recognize that if we're going to cover a bigger area, we're going to need more money. We've got funding set aside far in excess of what is needed to cover the difference. And I think that it's an appropriate change. So I'd increase the budget to 120,000. Hopefully, there's a second for that.
Before we do that, I'm looking at council procedure bylaws, which I look at from time to time. I believe we can only deal with one amendment at a time. But I might look to the mover of the amendment and see if there's any interest in reconsidering that amended motion.
Well, given I heard a bunch of people shake their heads and say no to that, I'm trying to look for more people coming on board. I prefer to deal with my amendment first and then potentially an amendment to the budget afterwards. Plus, I don't think, unless I withdrew mine and put a new one on, I don't think we can amend an amendment because that would be
We cannot.
Second level of inception, and we're not allowed to do that. So I'll just leave it as is. But I don't think that precludes, and maybe the clerk can confirm, that after this passes or fails, that an amendment to the budget couldn't be proposed
That's correct.
To the standing amendment.
That is correct, Deputy Mayor. Thank you.
I'll bring it up after the vote.
All right, thank you very much. I have Counselor Pelosi. I think you're frozen, counselor. Counselor, you had your hand up? Counselor Pelosi?
All right, thank you, your worship. Having an unstable internet connection here in the office. Just thank you to colleagues for the conversation tonight. I also, in Ward 12, don't have BIAs or CIPs, and I do have many restaurants struggling. And when they did reach out for help while they were doing their patios and even asking for help with idling signs to go up by the patio for residents can have a better dining experience, the city couldn't even help with those. So really frustrated on many levels of how some businesses are helped and some aren't. I do see the need for businesses throughout the city to have help. Just frustrated as well that we seem to exclude so many who are struggling in small areas of the city, who already don't have other infrastructure to help them. So I am mindful of that as I weigh these decisions moving forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other speakers on the list. And again, I'll turn your attention to the motion moved and seconded by Counselor, Deputy Mayor Morgan and Counselor Van Holst, that this be amended by including all BIAs in London to be eligible to participate in the proposed program. Let's call the vote.
Counselor Van Meerebergen? Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
I believe you had an amendment you wanted to put forward.
Just increase the 20,000, so it increases by 20%. If we were covering 80% of them last time, I think we need to cover an additional 20% just to make sure it goes just as far.
Thank you. And I knew you had Counselor Van Holst as your second. Colleagues, I'm not sure if there's a lot of new discussion, but if there is any, we'll entertain it. Otherwise, we'll call the vote. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, your worship. And I know we're early into debate here on these London Recovery Network ideas. You know, and I'm hearing already, well, we've set money aside and we should spend it. And what I'm mindful of is what happened to us when, early in our term, we were debating the various components of the former BRT plan. And that night, we approved three legs. We didn't approve two legs. But when we didn't approve those two legs, we didn't save that money for future considerations. Instead, we went ahead and allocated it all that night. And there was nothing left for future considerations. When Counselor Squire, for example, brought forward a request to look at some options for North transit improvements or for West transit improvements, there was no municipal contribution left. So it's easy to say it's 20,000 here. And actually, a 20% increase, when we're told, Counselor Hopkins at least indicated she thinks it'll only add about 10%. I'm not sure that we're actually just not increasing the overall budget. But we're going to talk about some other big spending dollars. And Counselor Lehman referenced this earlier. There's $2.6 million worth of ideas that have been put forward already. And we are not even really in the COVID recovery phase yet. We have no idea what we are going to need for dollars down the road for other initiatives. So I'm certainly not prepared to start adding to budgets tonight as we craft these things out and as we decide what we're prepared to support and not support, until we see some results back from them. If in a year we had a request to continue this, I would entertain that now. But now, to me, is not the time to start adding to the budget. I think we need to be very cognizant of the fact that London Health Unit budget request that's coming our way. We have no source of funding identified yet for next year's winter interim shelter housing. And that is an important, and while we might say that's not necessarily COVID, I would suggest that dealing with the challenge of homelessness and housing in our downtown core is probably the most important thing we can do for COVID recovery. So I want to leave money in the pot for future decisions here. So I won't be supporting this budget increase, and I won't be supporting any other budget increases that come forward tonight with regard to the items that we're discussing.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis. Counselor Hopkins?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And I am speaking to the increase from 100,000 to 120,000. And I am surprised at $20,000 here, but I'm more than happy to support this increase, given the fact that 100,000, we heard from staff, was not going to go a long way. And we've increased our BIAs up, and we're not exactly sure how that's going to look like. I do want to make a comment to Counselor Lewis's comment about the BRT funding and making that decision. I respectfully say that I understand that conversation, the BRT conversation, and where the West and the North legs are going in a different way. So I'm not sure what that has got to do with the 20,000 that we're asking here to increase to the extra BIAs that are going to be included in this funding. So I don't see this as a lot of money at all, and very supportive of it.
Thank you. Counselor Squire?
So this gives me a chance to talk about budget approaches, which probably people are sick of hearing me talk about budget approaches and where mine differ from other people. We have a long way to go with the COVID crisis. We're, in my humble opinion, we're just scratching the surface of the needs that our community is going to have as we move through. And I think in some ways, we're going to have a lot more challenges coming up. And I just, given the approach that we took at our committee, the one I was involved in, where we said it has to be related to COVID. It has to be something that's going to provide assistance to people quickly and right now. I just think this is not an approach I can endorse. And I bring the same approach to this as I brought to our main budget, where we're now looking at tax increases that, quite frankly, people are finding difficult, very difficult. And so I do not want to spend all the money that we've allocated to COVID because it's there, just because it's there. And I don't care whether it's 5,000 or 10,000. I just think we've got to be prudent with that money because our citizens are going to need it going forward. We know about the Health Unit. We know about the drop in our user fees. We know that transit is challenged. There are so many things that are directly challenged by COVID that we're going to have to deal with after this. And I really worry that we're going to spend what we allocated, the $5 million, too quickly, too fast with regard to all the needs that we have in the future. So I'm with Counselor Lewis. I'm not going to be looking at budget increases. Some I won't vote for, but I certainly won't be looking at budget increases tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, oh, excuse me, Counselor Cassidy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really torn about this one. But I do share the concern of what's coming down and not, and, you know, things that have been mentioned are things that we know about. I fear the unknown more than the known right now. So I recognize the need to do as much as we can for as many businesses as possible. I also do believe, I know Mr. Barrett spoke about it and said 80% of the patios we're talking about are situated downtown. I don't think 100% of those 80% will be looking for these grants. I think many, some of the patios proactively went out and did the thing. I know, for example, patio heaters were impossible to get. There was a back order on patio heaters, I think, across the province for sure, possibly across the country because patios were doing these, or restaurants were doing this. They were expanding their patios. I recognize this is the smaller businesses that don't have the resources that the larger ones maybe had when they jumped on this kind of expansion. But I realize I'm the last one to speak. If somebody else speaks and possibly changes my mind, but I think right now I am leaning towards keeping the budget where it is.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion is lost, 6 to 9.
Thank you, colleagues. Now we will look to which includes all BIAs in London to be eligible to participate in the proposed program. That was the amendment that was passed. I'll look for a mover. Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Van Holst. Any other new comments colleagues wish to add? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Counselor Turner and Counselor Pelosi?
The voting panel hasn't popped up for me. I will vote affirmative.
Thank you. Closing the vote and the motion carries 12 to 3.
Thank you, colleagues. Counselor Squire?
I believe the balance of the motion can go on the floor. You'll be happy to hear that that was unanimous support from the committee, which will hopefully get me off my feet sooner rather than later. So I can just put that on the floor.
I wonder if I could ask you to be specific, Counselor Squire, in relation
That's the facade improvement program that was unanimously supported at committee. I don't know if anyone wants to speak to it, but I'm happy to move and put it on the floor. It's like Counselor Hopkins wants to say something.
Well, I saw Counselor Lehman first
Oh, sorry.
And then Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you. I just, I've got a junior interest in 2.5 of that. So it can, is that the whole, was there other items on that?
Sir?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Part A included 2.5, which is the grant funding building code for facade upgrades. 2.6, appointed downtown lead at City Hall. 2.7, create a business concierge service. 2.8, create a core area champion at senior level. And 2.9, create an integrated economic development blueprint.
Counselor?
Could we just take out the part that Counselor Lehman has a conflict on? Separate it out, and then he can vote, not vote, recuse on that and vote on the balance?
So we're dealing with A with the exclusion of 2.5, colleagues, due to junior interest.
I think the clerks are still ruminating on that. I think Counselor Lehman would just want to know what he shouldn't be voting on. That's the issue.
To you, Mr. Mayor, we'll put 2.5 up first. So A, 2.5 of A, and then we'll put the balance of the motion on.
Comments or questions with respect to A less 2.5? Counselor Hopkins?
Yeah, your worship, I just want to make a comment on 2.5 and thank the committee, encourage my colleagues to support this. The facade programs and opportunities that exist in CIPs throughout the city. Opening and expanding that program is something that is important to businesses, especially if you have a CIP in your area. And opening it up to patios, furniture, barriers, whatever businesses need, restaurants to be able to succeed is something that I'm sure we can all support. Thank you.
Any other comments on the side? So on 2.5? Seeing none?
Counselor Helmer? Oh, closing the vote and the motion carries 14 with
Counselor Helmer. Oh, closing the vote and the motion carries, 14 with one recused.
And the balance-
Counselor Squire.
The balance of the motion can now go on the floor.
Any comments or questions on the balance of A? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Yeah. I thought we were putting the balance on-
You want the whole thing?
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Everything.
Yeah. Yeah. It's just a name. Just a name. Squire hand. It's a bar. Yeah, I like it.
Almost there, colleagues. I'm advised we'll require a secondary for this, please. Counselor Lewis. With that secondary, any other comments or questions? Then we will call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
That's it for me, Mr. Chair. I hope my other colleagues are getting through quicker.
Well, the, their advantage is they get to sit down, with the exception of SPPC, as they present their report. I'll look to the fourth report of the commu, thank you very much, Counselor Squire. I'll look to the fourth report of the Community and Protective Services Committee and call in Counselor Helmer, the Chair, to present the report, please.
Yeah, I think probably no luck of that, this report, unfortunately. I know for sure that 2.2, which is the LCRN recommendations from the Community Recovery Network has been pulled because people want to talk about 2.4, 5.4, 5.5, and 5.6. We had a pretty spirited discussion at committee about a variety of these recommendations. So I think I can put the whole rest of the report on the floor, with the exception of the LCRN item, and then those four items, 2.4, 5.4, 5.5, and 5.6, at least I know people want to discuss and potentially vote on those items differently.
Does anyone wish any other item dealt separately? Seeing none, any comments or questions on those items, with the exception of those which have been pulled? Counselor Van Hooft.
Thank you, Your Worship. So on the Community and Protective Services Committee, item seven or 4.1, the business case for lighting dog parks. I just wanted to make a, a comment on that. I had brought forward a motion that, that staff prepare a business case for lighting one dog park a year. And the reason for that was residents had wrote in, said in the wintertime, the, where they take their, have to walk their dogs predictably. They're in the dark and would feel it would be safer if they were illuminated. Staff suggested that that motion might be a good one, so I, I did bring that forward. I, I guess I was surprised it wasn't supported, being just a business case and being kind of a safety issue. However, rather than put it on the floor, I, and, and try to pass it at committee, I'll just leave it to the residents to maybe if they're, maybe prepare, ask for a delegation and to speak to that in a little more detail to the committee. So I do thank the committee for considering it and receiving my, my, my communication and perhaps we'll, we'll see that again. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Squire.
I just wanted to comment on item nine, 5.2, which is residential rental units licensing bylaw review. I was happy to see this go the way it did. I, I think it's always important that we recognize as, as city councillors that there's matters of jurisdiction between a municipality and a province, particularly in the areas of rents, because during COVID, there's been a lot of concern about issues relating to evictions, issues relating to rent. We have to remember that those are, those are the jurisdiction of the provincial government. So I'm glad to see it going this way. I was glad to see Mr. Kotolak was, was on the ball in terms of responding in that way. So I think this is the proper course.
Thank you. Any other comments? Then with the exception of those LCRN items that have been pulled, we will call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Okay, I'll put everything that's been recommended by the committee except for 2.4, 5.4, 5.5, and 5.6 on the floor. I think that's probably the easiest way to proceed, and then we can just deal with them one by one, very similar to how we did at committee.
Counselor, the clerks requested that we just repeat those items. I think a little more slowly will be to the benefit, I think, of all of council as well.
I'll do it again. So these are, just to be clear, the items in the table in the staff report, not items in the council agenda. So 2.4, 5.4, 5.5, and 5.6. Those are the four items that have been flagged for me by colleagues who reached out in advance of the meeting. So let me know if there's-
Yeah, everything else will be on the floor, with the exception of those four items.
Thank you, Counselor Helmer.
Thank you, Counselor Helmer. Comments or questions on those items that, except for those that have been pulled? Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to comment really quickly on 4.4, the public toilets and sanitation item. I think this is a really, really core need in the downtown. The one thing that I, I do want to share with colleagues is the caution that at this cost, when the funding runs out, there will be an ongoing operating cost that we are going to have to absorb in future budgets through our operating budgets. I did ask of staff at committee if perhaps because the need for public sanitation facilities is part of a growing city, if we could consider that under assessment growth. There's a potential for that as well. But I did want to just share that there is an ongoing budget implication for approving this. That said, I think it's a really important need for the downtown. We've depended far too long on the generosity of downtown merchants to make their washroom facilities available to the public, to those who unfortunately might be sleeping rough sometimes. And I think having a public, two public washroom spaces actually is really a valuable added thing for all Londoners and particularly for those vulnerable Londoners who are struggling in the core area.
Thank you. Counselor Squire.
Thank you. Just to comment on what Counselor Lewis said, this certainly meets the criteria that I said earlier to help those people who are in the highest level of, of difficulty during this time. It's just a matter of dignity, I think, to have the availability of those washrooms, and I'm, I'm happy that we're doing that. I did want to comment on the idea of free transit to downtown. That matter did make its way to the commission meeting of the London Transit Commission. I think the general answer was that would be a large amount of money to pay for free transit downtown. There would be questions about how do you manage it? How do you know that's where the ultimate destination? But certainly the commission did not view it as something that the commission itself could by any means carry. And it would involve a huge infusion of money by the city. And I would, I would just say that at this point in time, as you know, we're, we've got a lot of challenges with COVID, and this would be just an additional challenge that would be a financial, real financial burden.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on on this consent component? Counselor Helmer.
Yeah, I just wanted to wrap up on this part of the motion. It's really important, the recommendation around the national childcare framework. I know that this is an advocacy position essentially to other levels of government about the importance of a national childcare framework. I do think that we've seen that throughout the pandemic, the kind of disruption to the economy that comes from childcare not being available. We're seeing so many women who have been forced out of the workforce because they're being pulled into childminding duties and looking after their kids and being, working at home and having to do childcare. And, you know, it's really, really clear that the pandemic has exposed how important a well-functioning, affordable, accessible childcare system is to the overall functioning of our society and the economy. So you know, I think this one, of all these items, you know, there's some things we're going to do directly. There's some other things here where we're going to say, this is a time for governments at all levels to really step up and tackle this issue. This is a really important one, and I wanted to emphasize it here at the council, as I did at committee.
Thank you. And I think with that, we can call the vote.
Counselor Van Merbergen. Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Counselor Homer.
I, I think I'll put 2.4 on the floor. I believe it was Counselor Lewis who told me he wanted to discuss this one directly, so perhaps I'll just turn it over to him.
Let's see. Please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I did ask for this one to be pulled. I did support this initially at committee. But on further review of all of these items over the last week or so, I'm going to be not supporting this one. Again, I come back to what we're doing here and where the value is that we're getting. This is a $200,000 one-time allocation to support capital purchases for improved holiday-themed decorations and lighting. Respectfully, I don't think that it's the holiday decorations and lighting that are at the core of the downtown's issues or truly part of COVID recovery. Although I'm happy to support trying the Christmas market idea, I think that this is just layering on more spending on top of that idea for decorations. And I'm also concerned, as I mentioned with the public toilets and sanitation, there is a $60,000 annual ongoing operating cost associated with this item. Decorations and lighting have to be put up, taken down, put into storage, damaged items replaced, and that is a cost that's not in the current budget. So while I'm, I think that the washrooms are, are one that is a core need. I don't see that this one is a core need or that it's going to make a significant difference in the downtown or the city's COVID recovery. That's why we'll be not supporting this one.
Other comments or questions? Counselor Van Hooft.
Thank you. And I, with regard to the, the decorations, you know, I tend, I'm, I'm tending to agree with Counselor Lewis. However, that, that's simply because I, I don't know what's going to happen in the future. I mean, I, I hope this pandemic situation just resolves itself, or certainly we start taking different approaches to it. However, had it been back in December, I would say these kind of decorations kind of transform the whole downtown into a kind of Christmas market and makes people more comfortable and a little more joyful to be out there. So I, I, I do see the value. If we want people to be outside in, in the cold weather, then this kind of thing would, would be great. But it seems to me also like that might be a decision or that we could make later on, later on in 2021, as we, as we reproach that, that time of year again.
Thank you. Other comments? Counselor Homer.
Ju, just on this item specifically, I think it's worth a shot. If we're successful in public health measures that are underway now, you know, the vaccination rollout goes well as we roll into Christmas season next year, or later this year, sorry. You know, I think the recovery could be well underway, and we could have a very significant retail shopping opportunity for people to reconnect with the core. It's going to be a long time of disruption by the time we come around to December 2021. I think, you know, we have to make some investments to change things so that things are going to be better. And, and I don't think we should just sort of sit on the sidelines and say, well, you know, hopefully somebody else will do it. You know, I think this kind of thing is necessary. I don't think it's the most exciting initiative. You know, replacing the decorations, getting better decorations. But in this kind of situation, I really rely on the people who know this area the best. Right? So these ideas are coming forward from the community. They're saying, you know, it would be really helpful for us as retailers and people who represent retailers is that we could really liven up the street at an important time for commerce. And so what we'd like to do is for the city to cover some of these things, which you guys can help us out with that. And I, and I see it as being very similar to the sidewalk expansions, the patio expansions, helping cover the costs, right? We want to expand the commercial space, make it better, liven it up. And I think putting something in the budget now and saying, we're going to go ahead with this, rolling around into the winter of this year, you know, once we get into it, I, I think that's going to be really helpful. So, you know, I, I think it's worth a shot. If ever there was a year to, to do something like this, I think 2021 is going to be that year. And if it turns out that you know, the pandemic is still raging and we have a huge problem still on our hands, I, I'm sure it's going to be put off until the, you know, the time would be appropriate. So I hope colleagues will support it. I think it's a worthwhile idea on its own merit.
Thank you. I wonder if I could ask the Deputy Mayor to take the chair?
Yes, I'll go to the mayor.
Thank you very much, colleagues. I've had some perspectives on some of the items that we have supported, that I have supported in committee and some that I have not. This is one I supported in committee. And I'm mindful of any unnecessary expense, and I think we have to be respectful of tax dollars regardless of regardless of the, this particular crisis. But also, at the same time, I think we have to look at it in light of this pandemic. And it seems to me that this investment has several positives going forward from a financial standpoint. I think it's good for the economy. I think it's good for tourism. I think it's good for our own community. So I think from those perspectives, that works for me. I'm not sure that we might not encourage our downtown BIA to take responsibility on an ongoing basis to deal with some of the ongoing potential for expense there. And I think that's something that I would encourage staff to consider because when we, when we entrust those, that kind of decision-making locally, I think what it does in part, I think it, it, it commits them and and I think that that, their decision-making helps as well. But I am going to support this particular initiative again and being mindful that any dollars out need to be focused on COVID recovery. And I think this, because I do believe it's good for the economy, for tourism, and for our own community, I think that makes good and practical sense. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I'll turn the chair back over to the mayor. I don't have any further speakers, except for Counselor Squire.
Counselor, Counselor Squire.
So one of the challenges I have with a lot, a lot of the things we're doing is, is the, the sort of speculation that, well, if we do this, it's going to do something else. It's going to, it's going to enhance the economy. It's going to bring more people downtown. It's going to do this, 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 and this. And Counselor Helmer said it was worth a shot, which I respect that he used those words because it is a bit of a shot. I would much rather, again, and I think Counselor Lehman talked about this, I'd like to directly help businesses. I, I, again, this isn't as broad as I would like. I'm, I'm just not sure that there's this connection between what we suffered from COVID and putting more decoration and lighting up. I, I'm just having a really large challenge- large challenge seeing that and that this is the kind of COVID investment we would make. So I'm, I'm, that's my point of view.
Thank you. Any other comments, colleagues? Seeing done, we will call the question.
Counselor Hillier. I'll mark him as absent. Closing the vote and the motion is lost, six to eight.
Counselor Homer.
Uh, thank you. I'll put item on the floor. This is the Public Art Projection program, which has been recommended by the Community Recovery Network, uh, was recommended by committee. And, uh, this essentially colleagues will be familiar when we had to rent, uh, that kind of projection system to do the projection for the World Figure Skatings for the World Figure Skating Championships back in 2013. The idea would be to have a couple of these systems that were owned. Um, and then we could use them for public art projection displays um, as we think is appropriate and to sort of liven up uh, the core and to create a different outdoor experience for people when they're coming down, uh, in terms of public art.
I'll look for comments or questions. Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I asked for this one to be pulled too, so, so I'll start the thing off. Um, I didn't ask for the next one to be pulled, so I'll let somebody else go first next time. Um, uh, this is one that, uh, I, I spoke strongly against at committee and, uh, I am going to do the same tonight. Uh, where public art projection is successful is when it is an add-on to an existing draw. Um, and, uh, the mayor and I, uh, had a little bit of a verbal spartan committee, uh, so I hope he'll, he'll take this with, uh, the due respect I intend. Uh, when people, for example, enjoy the light show at the parliament buildings, uh, it's not because they're going there for the light show. It's because they're going to see the parliament buildings, which are themselves a destination uh, site. Counselor Helmer mentioned the World Figure Skating, uh, example. Uh, and while certainly there have been some changes in technology, um, I would draw to folks' attention that, uh, for the World Figure Skating Championships, the, the cost for one week of public art projection was actually in excess of $600,000. That wasn't all city contribution, but that was, uh, combined where the total came. So if that's what we got for one week, uh, I want you to really think about $300,000. Uh, what kind of quality investment are we making here? Uh, even given that technologies have changed along the way. Uh, I also think that it's really important to point out that, again, we have uh, some capital purchases in here. But there's also a cost for curating what would be displayed. Uh, and it works out to about $50,000 a year. Uh, but again, when this initial money runs out, where's that $50,000 going to continue to come from? You know, we've, we've got $600,000 on the public toilets. Uh, we were talking about $60,000 on the motion that was just lost. Uh, we're talking about another $50,000 potentially here. These are ongoing operating costs. And I, I think Counselor Cassidy put it really well earlier. I'm concerned about the things we don't know that are coming, let alone the things we already know. So I think respectfully, we have to ask ourselves, is this really what is going to help with COVID recovery? Are projecting some art displays or some photos on the side of Budweiser Gardens or another building downtown? And by the way, when we asked that committee, Budweiser Gardens was really the only example of where we could use this projection technology uh, from staff. So it's not as though it would be uh, highly mobile and, and usable in a lot of scenarios from what we heard so far. Uh, so again, we're talking about $300,000 here. It's not a small amount of money. This would be, you know, a wonderful addition to, for example, uh, a Juno's Week, perhaps. But I don't think as an ongoing investment for the city, this is where we're going to get our, our money. Uh, as somebody who's, uh, taken these items and didn't done some public engagement with us, with our constituents, not all of them are mine, some of them were from other wards, but I've had conversations with over 700 people about this. And not one person said to me, please, you've got to support this. You've got to change your vote. This is really, really important. And 700 plus people, not one person said this was a priority for them. You know, we keep talking about how these ideas came from the community. These ideas came from the folks who participated in the Recovery Network. They didn't come from the community at large. And I appreciate the work that the Recovery Network volunteers put into this. But at no time was our commitment that we were going to do every idea that came forward. The line has to be drawn somewhere when we're talking about the use of public dollars, and I think this is where we have to draw the line.
Thank you. Counselor Van Host.
Uh, thank you, worship. And through you, this time I'm inclined not to agree with Counselor Lewis, although he, he makes some good arguments. I, I think that this projection system is, is a valuable thing. There's a lot that's happened in, in 2020 that's made life worse uh, for people, but I see this as something that could make things a little better. Uh, it's, it's an, it's an interesting thing to have, a fun thing to have in the community. And as I see it, no matter what their means, uh, young people will always have uh, something they could do on a, on a first date or, or a date. So it's, uh, it's, it's, it's that kind of thing that this is available to, to everyone. And, uh, many, many people throughout the year will probably take advantage of it. They'll probably say, hey, let's, let's go downtown and, and see this, see this thing. So I, I'm interested to see what we're able to do with it. Uh, and I'm, I'm also excited that there's, uh, a specific new draw for downtown. For, for us, that draw is just going to be downtown or it could be some area, other area of the city, but it, it gives us something, uh, to look forward to in the evenings. Uh, and I'm, I hope we will support it because it'll be a nice addition to what we have because it's something, it's something different. And for that amount of money, I think we'll have something that we can use for uh, a number of years in, in the future and we'll get a lot out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Squire.
Um, this is, uh, Mr. Chair, very similar to the last item. Again, people are, are saying if we do this, this is going to happen. All these people are going to come downtown to look at the lights. Um, and again, I, I think I know why people come downtown in the evening particularly. They come to go to Budweiser Gardens, very active, uh, really fantastic hockey team. They go to some of the really good restaurants in town um, that are around the market. And again, I, that's, that's who I want to help. Um, and I'm just, I'm having trouble relating this directly again to COVID recovery. I mean, I think we could say everything is COVID recovery that enhances in some way downtown Old East Village or other areas. But I really, I'm trying to, to see that connection with some of these items. So again, I'm challenged with this one.
Any other comments or questions? Deputy Mayor, I wonder if you'd take the chair for a moment.
I'll go to the mayor.
Thanks very much. This is one that I supported in committee, but I am not inclined to support now. And not because, uh, the idea doesn't have merit. Uh, you know, we've heard comments about, uh, with some of the other things, what will people come down for? Well, it certainly won't be the Christmas lights now, but I will tell you that, uh, that there are a lot of reasons why people come down because it's exciting, it's vibrant. And that's the goal I think we all have. But I'm just mindful now as I consider the, uh, issues around COVID recovery that, uh, this may well be a project we could consider in the future. Uh, this isn't a $600,000 plus dollar expense. This is a, uh, $100,000 per projector, uh, for the two projectors plus paying local artists for some, uh, some, uh, of, of their craft work too in design. But I think it's something that we might consider in the future, but I think right now where we're trying to be exceptionally mindful of our dollars, uh, I am, I've reconsidered and I think, uh, at this time, uh, I'm not inclined to, uh, to put it forward, but I think it is something that, uh, because of the creativity of the, uh, of the participants in the Recovery Network, that we look forward to this as a potential idea sometime in the future, just not now. Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I'll return the chair to the mayor.
Any other final comments or questions? Seeing done, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion. I've closed it. We'd have to do reconsideration. It's failed seven to eight.
Uh, Counselor Lehman.
You, you, you wish.
I apologize. I clicked on the wrong button. I was wondering if I can get reconsideration.
I need a move and a secondary move by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Pelosi. Um, we'll call the question for reconsideration of Counselor Lehman's vote.
This is the vote on the reconsideration. Closing the vote and the motion passes thirteen to.
All right, now we will go, uh, to the motion as to whether we a project put forward, uh, we will call the vote.
Counselor Squire. Closing the vote and the motion fails six to nine.
Thank you, uh.
Uh, that brings me to a, uh, another idea that's sort of arts and culture related in the core. This is the mural and art walk uh, program. This is recommended by the Community Recovery Network. And of course, one of the priority action tables that was working in this area is coming forward with the recommendation from the committee. Uh, I can say as somebody who represents an area where there were some murals done early uh, on in the pandemic, scraping together some funds that were available, um, actually worked out really well, made, uh, sort of the best of a pretty bad situation. Um, covering up some businesses that had unfortunately had to close and making sure that it was really very positive environment and looked as good as possible um, in the, in the area when those businesses were shut, some of which are, are still shut now. This is a bit different because it's looking at murals in other places, not just necessarily on facades. Um, but you'll see the details in the report. And I believe it was pulled by Counselor Lehman. So, uh, perhaps you want to go to him next.
Well, let's do that. Counselor Lehman, please.
Thank you. I just want to say I apologize to my colleagues for wasting our time and my click trigger finger there. Um, yeah, you know, this is another, uh, instance of I don't see how it's COVID related. I think it's an, an interesting idea. Um, uh, next summer, uh, we're going to have a lot of dust and construction, uh, with, uh, BRT and King Street being ripped up. Um, I also think it's something, an initiative that should probably come more from Tourism London or local, uh, BIA. Um, you know, I think we're looking at um, a lot of interesting ideas. Uh, I repeat myself, I'm looking at, uh, is it a COVID recovery, uh, point? And is it, um, accessible for you know, all businesses across the city? And we've, we seem to be focusing for some reason on downtown. We, we're doing a lot for downtown, right? In our budget, we've uh, addressed a considerable amount of funding, uh, to address serious issues that we have downtown. I think our focus has to be there. Um, you know, I think, uh, the $600,000 that we are allocating to, uh, public washrooms uh, is a good example of focusing, uh, on areas that, uh, uh, of great concern for those that are really suffering uh, from this pandemic uh, in, in true measure and, you know, personal dignity. This, however, is not, um, an area where I would say it falls under COVID recovery. Uh, I, I think the other institutions I mentioned would be better handled, uh, at a, at a different time. Um, you know, uh, an interesting remark was made earlier tonight about what's coming down the road that we're going to need, uh, the money that we set aside for COVID recovery. And, um, I think we have to be very, um, conscientious of our taxpayers' money uh, and looking for items that we're truly going to need and not be in a hurry to show uh, that we're just doing something for the sake of doing something. So, yeah, I think this is a, a, be an interesting thing. Um, I think, uh, be great for Tourism London or the LDBA to, uh, to get involved in, um, or Old East Village. Um, but, uh, I will not support this tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Van Host.
Oh, thank you, your worship. And, uh, my I'm sorry, there is a phone call. Um, yeah, so, uh, regarding this item, I, I do want to say that it, it is in, in very much, uh, a COVID-related in that, uh, and like the previous item, is that it allows people to be outside and, and enjoy something. So that's the, I think that's how they're, that's how those things are connected, uh, the last couple of items really. And, uh, although I would have supported the, the first a little later on in this year, I, I did support the last item, this one, uh, I, I also do see the value of this, uh, this public art. And if it's, it's, uh, if there's a lot of things together uh, that, uh, people could make an event out of, hey, this is, then, uh, they would, they would go, uh, do this, uh, do this mural walk. Uh, they would have a chance to be outside. So if we're going to tell people that, uh, they can't be inside, uh, then it's good if we let them, uh, enjoy things outside. And I, I believe that's, that's why this is, is COVID-related. So having made that point, I'll, I'll support this item. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Pelosi.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I recognize this is down to the downtown core again, and there's many other areas of the city that have many things of note, certainly thinking about Old East Village and the wonderful artwork that they've done. Um, I will be supporting this one tonight. I have, uh, a friend of the town and in Kitchener, they do something similar. And some of them are government buildings and they do different tours of different heritage districts. This is a program I could see starting, catching on and continue on to other areas of the city benefiting many residents throughout it with it being COVID. Um, her and her partner did take the opportunity in Kitchener, traveling from slightly outside the area to take the day walking around, discovering new businesses, sampling food as they went. And when I did connect with her, she was so excited to tell me about all the things, all the artists, all the places she discovered in a community that she had been at for decades. So for me, this is one that we can do socially distanced, not knowing what's going to happen with COVID. There could be some economic drivers and spinoffs to the community as well as helping to actually create some employment for local artists and hopefully creating a program that could be picked up and expanded by different BIAs, Tourism London and different cultural aspects. And even the museum doing some things. And maybe they'd like the program and want to help fund even more on their own sponsoring opportunities as we go. So this is a program that I do see has the potential to grow if we just give it some seed money to get started. the potential to grow if we just give it some seed money to get started. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Turner.
Thank you, your worship. So I recognize this is another one of those philosophical things. And we're going to have a fairly philosophical divide on, on the approach to this. I don't think that this is necessarily a tourism thing. I think this is unless you're talking about tourism in your own town, which is fine. And I think we need to promote and and do what we can to get people into the core. Core is being disproportionately affected, as I said before, but it also disproportionately is representative of an economic driver for the city. We've got the State of the Downtown Report recently. The State of Downtown Report shows that for its land size, it represents a small amount of area in the city and a markedly higher amount of assessment compared to other areas within the city. It punches above its weight. And the risk of of not investing and continuing to invest and continue to fan the flames in the core means that we lose our engine. And it's going to be really hard for us to recover. Another group in terms of COVID impacts that that were affected by the the impacts of COVID were artists. We see that in performing arts and we see that in visual arts. We see that in a lot of sectors and they're ones that aren't very thought of very often in our COVID recovery efforts because we're looking at traditional economic driver activities such as businesses, small businesses and but the arts industry is and it's interesting because I see a bit of a pendulum, a swing back and forth depending on what part of the art sector we're looking to support. And we just put a ton of money into the film sector. And then on the small arts to support the artists that we have here now. We're looking at going the other way. Anyway, I, I know that folks are aware they're going to be on this, but I think it's an important investment. And I think it, it helps right now especially as we've seen a lot of people avoid the core because of because of lack of activity, because basically people generate people. If there's people there, people will be there. If there aren't people there, they're going to avoid there and and we risk continuing not having people in the core. And as in doing that, we don't attract more people into the core. I know it's kind of chicken and egg, but I don't see this as a significant investment risk, I think. And I think it has the potential to pay some good dividends. So I'm going to support this and and as I will continue where these investments come from.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. So I appreciate all the comments so far and and a lot of the points that I would have made have been made. I do want to point out that this is Old East Village as well as downtown, according to the report from the committee. I think that this is a great idea. My concern with the art, with the projection one had been I agreed with the comments that Sean Counselor Lewis made about it. Those kinds of art exhibitions go along with a reason to be downtown in the first place or a reason to be at that location in the first place. And I think that this facade idea is, is something that you know, Counselor Pelosi made a really good point about having that curated and this is what is part of the proposal, that curated reason to go there. You're, you're on a walk and you're getting to look at these exhibits. I know in near Tofino, there is a town that they put up all of these murals on the buildings. It was a town that lost their mill. I visited there many years ago, like 25 years ago, and it's a destination on your way to Tofino. You stop at this little town to see the murals that have been painted on the buildings that you know, otherwise this would have been a ghost town because this was the, the, the one industry that this town had, had left. So not that London is in those same dire circumstances, but I, I definitely see the value in the beautification in creating a semi or, or absolutely permanent exhibit in our downtown as well as giving employment to local artists. Not only does the downtown contribute an outsized proportion to the economic activity in the city, as Counselor Turner pointed out, culture as well in the city has an outsized proportion of economic activity in to, to London and and then the fringe benefit is that it's something beautiful for Londoners to appreciate and enjoy. So I'm happy to support this this proposal and and I think as Counselor Pelosi pointed out, it's something that could eventually also be migrate out away from the core into other areas of the city as well. So happy to support this.
Thank you. Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and I will continue to support these items that support the downtown core. And this is another item coming forward. So I am pleased to support this. I would like to make a comment though, and that is that COVID has sort of created this unprecedented demand on the downtown core without a doubt. And I do think the downtown needs help. So I am very supportive of items coming forward that will support our downtown core. I know residents in my ward want to be downtown and want to support downtown. For us to be a medium to large-sized municipality, we need solid downtown and downtown needs to be supported. And I am more than happy to support this moving forward.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. There's some interesting discussion happening on this one. And you know, with due respect to my colleagues, I'm not sure that people don't go downtown because there's nothing to do downtown. Because we don't invite them downtown. I think people and what I hear in my word often is I don't go downtown because I don't feel safe downtown. And that's not a nice thing to hear about our downtown, but that's the reality that many people feel. And when we're not addressing those core issues, I'm not sure that these other things are really going to provide a benefit. Now that said, I also think that there's a, there is a unique opportunity here to promote what we do have. I think that there's also Counselor Lehman addressed this in his opening remarks. There's a challenge timing wise. The downtown loop construction for rapid transit begins this year. So I'm not convinced that people are going to walk through a construction zone on a self-guided or guided tour of murals and other public art items. I also think we're missing out on some other real treasures that the city has to offer and show off. I will tell colleagues that I recently had the opportunity to chat with Counselor Nason, who represents the Transcone Ward in Winnipeg. An East End ward, a lot of similarities to Ward Two and including a community center that's been delayed, but without digressing too far on that. He was interested in our Hamilton Road tree trunks. And what kind of effort could be made around the Hamilton Road tree trunk tour and could they duplicate something like that in Winnipeg? And we had a good discussion about that. So there are some unique things that we are doing that I think are a draw to people in some instances. My concern with this one is less the dollars. To be honest, although the dollars are always a concern. My concern is the timing. Heading into a construction zone in the summer, which is going to be fairly significant. So I've been listening. I don't know if there's, there's any support for this. I'm going to wing it. I, I'm going to move a referral on this because I don't want to see it die or necessarily go ahead and not be taken up. I think there's merit here. I just think that the timing is wrong. So I'd like to refer it back to staff to come back with some further development around a rollout and timing of this before we commit to the spending one way or the other. Like I said, I don't know if I have a second or not. We'll look for that and see if there's anybody willing to put this on the back burner until we can get some more information.
Well, let's see. Do we have a second for that, for the referral? Counselor Kaiba, are you on the list to speak or are you seconding the referral, please?
I'm not seconding the referral. I'm on the list to speak on the motion that we're discussing right now.
All right, I'll ask finally, is there a second for the referral? I don't see a second.
I don't see a second, so I guess we won't refer it and I'll have to think about whether I'm going to support it or not then, given the timing on this.
Thank you. Counselor Squire.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. People are talking about philosophical issues with regard to what they're supporting and they're not supporting and I, I think, I'm not sure that's accurate if people are saying that we're not supportive of public art and art because philosophically, I'm very supportive of that. This one intrigues me, but I do have a question before I make comments. The money to fund this is projected through 2022 in terms of both the operating budget and the metrics. What is envisaged beyond 2022? Because it seems to me that this is something that if you were going to take it on and try to build the idea of the walks, that you would need time to do that. So the funding seems to end in 2022 and there's zero in 2023. Is the idea that it will be self-funding by then? Or is the idea that it will come back in a, in a budget, in a budget case to say, here it is now, self-sustaining, or it still needs money? That would, that would really interest me from the point of view of a question and then I'll have some comments.
That might well be a financial question. I'm not sure. Ms. Barbone or if we would take it somewhere else? I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Thank you through your worship. Mr. McGonigal will be able to answer that question. Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. And through your, your worship, we, we did take a couple of year outlook on most of these items under the economic recovery lens. It would be our intent to seek other funding sources to continue to support this project or bring back through the multi-year budget through the business case. But many of our community partners do have opportunities to leverage third-party funding and that's what we would be looking for moving forward.
Counselor?
This is one that I may very well support and there's a couple of reasons. Because I see it as a more doable sort of grassroots artistic initiative. We're talking about doing murals. We can, we can do that. We have artists to do it. It's going to provide assistance to those artists. And I know that when I spoke earlier about people most affected by COVID, I know artists certainly are included in that category. You can just imagine how not having live performances, galleries open. I know that that's been, been very severe. So and I also, the idea of the walks, I'm not convinced of it for downtown until we make other initiatives work in downtown, but I certainly know that in Ward Six, there are a lot of historic heritage properties. And there was actually someone at one point in time who was trying to move forward the idea of historic walks in, in North London. So this one, I think is something that is both COVID-related. Regardless, if it takes a little time, I think people, artists will still be suffering the effects of COVID. And I think there's a practicality to it as opposed to some of the other initiatives that I think is positive from my point of view. So I do have a different view of this than perhaps some of the other initiatives.
Thank you. Counselor Kaiba.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask staff if they could comment on, on the impact it would have if there was construction starting whether or not they are able to still hold on once we approve it to be able to hold on to, to the money before they move on, or if this would be something that would impact in a, in a negative way or not.
I apologize. Counselor Kaiba, that was a question to staff or was that just a comment? I apologize.
It was a question to staff.
We'll take that back to staff for a response, please.
Yeah, thank you. And through your worship. There will be downtown construction. That's correct, but it's not the entire downtown and there's, there's lots of, there's lots of great places that will be still able to be part of this program and, and we think the program could continue and still, still help bring people downtown while, while there is construction going on.
Counselor Kaiba.
Thank you. So I just wanted to speak in favor of this item as I did at committee. I do believe that artists in our community have been impacted by COVID and this is a way to use something that is innovative in my opinion as we move forward. You know, and we adapt and think about the different ways that we can do things differently and the lessons that we will have learned from from COVID. I do believe that this meets, oops, sorry. I didn't mean to do that. It would, it meets the criteria and it does support artists. I hope that our colleagues will support this and it's like Counselor Pelosi said, I hadn't thought about it, but I'm glad she said it. This is something that could grow across the city. So thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Yeah, so not too many people know this about me, but before I went to university, I actually went to Sheridan College for visual arts and so I'm not offering to paint a mural. You wouldn't want that. There's a reason I didn't pursue it further. What I will say is the recovery needs to include, you know, all aspects of the city and that includes the arts. And we do not spend a significant portion of our budget on the arts and I, I see some potential in this, this one for a couple of reasons. First off, I think that there is some flexibility in the way the money can be spent, so I'm not worried about the restrictions. I would also strongly encourage this to, this hundred thousand dollars to go predominantly towards the development of content and paying artists rather than the marketing of the program, I think. And would hope that's something that the London Arts Council could absorb a majority of the costs on. I'd rather get the money into the hands of creating content and, and local artists. And I actually think that in the absence of us having done neighborhood decision-making, of which there is always great ideas for, for improving areas of our city with, with public art generated by local artists. That it's, it's an appropriate investment and, and and I would say an investment and part of our recovery because I actually think if we create more opportunities for public art and public murals, that other programs and other initiatives can pick this up in other parts of the city. And there are many great spots, whether it's underpasses of bridges, on walking trails and, and other public entities and structures across the city that are prime candidates for this. And I think, you know, we can make this investment now in this targeted area as part of the recovery and hopefully it can spur investments and programs and third partner, party partners. And even neighborhood decision-making ideas in the future to create more public art across the city. It's also an ability to showcase the types of public art that we can have in our city. And when we engage in items like bonusing provisions, it's another example of something that can be created as part of that structure as well. So I'll support this one and you know, I like it. I think it has a lot of potential and I think it, it allows us to, you know, include local artists as part of the recovery as well.
I have no other speakers on the list. So with that, we'll call the vote.
Counselor Lewis and Counselor Kaiba. Counselor Kaiba. I'll mark her as absent for this vote. Close the vote and the motion carries eleven to three.
Colleagues, before we with the final item, I'd just like to mention when this concludes, which means we will have concluded the Community and Protective Services Report, we will, I will ask for a 15-minute refreshing pause. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Counselor Hallmer, please.
Hopefully somebody has been keeping track of the dollar amounts of the things that were not supported by council because we need to amend the amount later on in this motion coming from committee to be the appropriate amount rather than what was recommended. to be the appropriate amount rather than what was recommended by committee.
So noted. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
People need that information from staff. We can update that number.
We'll look to staff for that. We still have 5.6, Counselor, so do you want to deal with that, and then we will come back with the final tally, once we know what the final tally is?
I'm just so optimistic of 5.6 that I was skipping ahead. This is the mural facade grant. Unlike some of the other facade programs, this one is very focused on murals. And as I mentioned earlier when we were talking about 5.5, I've actually seen in action that murals on facades has been extremely effective in terms of responding immediately to the pandemic and its impact on businesses in Oldies Village in particular. I think it's also been working pretty well downtown. And in Oldies Village, speaking just to an issue that Counselor Lewis raised around construction, we've had the triple whammy of pretty significant street activity and people experiencing homelessness, major construction project on Dundas Street, and the pandemic. And I will say that the murals that have been done by local artists to brighten the place up and make it much better for everybody who's in the area have been very well received by local businesses that were very successful at very low cost. So a good way of supporting businesses and supporting artists.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. This is one I voted against at committee, and I will vote against again tonight. The last item, the Art Walk, I thought, you know, what swayed me in the end, there were a couple of things, not the least of which, we actually will be collecting metrics on it, and there's an opportunity to involve the whole city in the future. And if it doesn't work, well, then we'll have the metrics to show that, too. With the mural facade grant, my issue here is, again, we have a situation where we're layering on another layer of funding to something that we've actually already approved. In the earlier, in the Planning and Environment Committee report, we approved a quarter-million-dollar grant program for facade improvements. Nothing in that program prohibits, in that facade improvement, murals or other works of art being part of the grant request for them. This is specifically just for murals. And again, you know, we come to the downtown loop construction and those things. I think that there's been, you know, some real brightening of the downtown in terms of some of the murals I've seen in my, being a consumer downtown at some of the businesses. But it doesn't replace the fact that we have a problem with vacant storefronts. We have a problem still with poverty and homelessness and people's feeling of insecurity and being unsafe, whether that's their perception, they're entitled to it. I certainly feel safe in the downtown, but that's my experience, not others, so I'm not, again, I don't think that this is a recovery measure. I think that this is a nice-to-have, but I don't think it is going to be a draw for people. And this is not proposing, you know, an interactive thing, may add to what we just approved, perhaps, but we don't know what we've just, how effective what we just approved is going to be. So again, for me, it's about being incremental in our spending here, and trying a few things, but not necessarily everything. I supported the Christmas market, but I didn't support the regional holiday destination decorations. I supported the tour and guided walks, but I'm not going to support spending on this. I think there's facade money already available, not only through what we approved earlier in Planning and Environment, but through CIPs that are out there as well, and nothing prevents that from including art in the facade improvements already. So I'm not putting more money into facade improvements tonight.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll call the vote.
Counselor Kaibaga? I will mark her as absent. Closing the vote, and the motion carries 7 to 6.
So colleagues, I think, as per Counselor Helmer's report, page 3, 2.2D, we had an amount be approved to implement the above noted. Now, we have already approved 2.2D in general, so I think we need to have motion to reconsider 2.2D so that we could put in the appropriate amount that's there. So look for a motion to reconsider that specific item, please. Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Lewis. I'm sure there's no comments on that, unless there's any questions about that. Then we'll call that question. Again, this is for reconsideration.
Counselor Morgan and Counselor Lehman. Counselor Kaibaga? I'll mark the counselor as absent. Closing the vote, and the motion carries 13 to 0.
Thank and to provide us with the 2.2D, and that, for the benefit of a crowd, I'll ask the I'll ask the clerk to read that out as well, just for the benefit, the full component of what that means, please.
Mr. Mayor, we're not quite so smart with the number, so we're waiting for Cal for stop to advise us of the number. And we just received it. It's 1.3 million. Thank you, Ms. Barbone.
Are we confident it's 1.3 million, clerk?
Absolutely. Ms. Barbone gave us the number, so
Then it must be true. All right, then. So with that, we'll look for a motion, perhaps I'll look to you, Counselor Helmer. And if you could read it out with that amount for the benefit of those who are watching, clerk, and then we've got a mover. Do I have a second, by the way? Counselor Pelosi, would you read that out, clerk, please? That portion of D, please?
1.3 million be approved to implement the above noted approved ideas as amended. Set out in the business cases included in Appendix A of the above noted staff report, it being noted that municipal council previously authorized $5 million to be contributed to the Economic Development Reserve Fund to support social and economic recovery measures.
Any questions? Counselor Helmer?
I just wonder, it would be helpful for everybody to understand how we went from the 1.98 down to 1.3, so perhaps Ms. Barbone could just outline the specific changes.
Would you do that for us, Ms. Barbone, since we do trust your math?
Absolutely. Through your worship, so item 2.4 had a total of $180,000 over the three years with respect to the operating side, and then there was tied to that the $200,000 that was for the capital for a total of $380,000. So with that being removed, we would remove both portions. And for item 5.4, there was $50,000 for both 2021 and 2022 for a total of $100,000, and $200,000 with respect to capital for a grand total of 300. So if you remove both those totals, that is $680,000, which changes your 1.98 million dollar total, less the 680 for a grand total of 1.3 million dollars that has been approved by council this evening.
Counselor Helmer?
Thank you very much, and just to make it doubly clear, even though we added in the funding for 1.3, because we didn't change it at committee, the 1.98, there's no change there where we added in the $100,000 for the item that was not recommended. So I think that's helpful. I'm happy to move that motion to 1.3.
Is there a second, Counselor Pelosi? Any other comments or questions? Let's call that question.
Counselor Van Holst and Counselor Lehman. Closing the vote, and the motion carries 11 to 2.
Thank you, and I'm advised by the clerk, who has all wisdom, that 2.2 as amended requires a mover and second. I wonder if I look to you again, Counselor Helmer, to move 2.2 as amended?
Happy to do that.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that? Counselor Lewis? Any comments or questions? Then let's call this question.
Closing the vote, and the motion carries 11 to 2.
Counselor Helmer? Thank you very much. Colleagues, 7. With your indulgence, I'd like to have a refreshing pause till 7:05, and I'll look for a motion to adjourn to 7:05. Recession, I'm told. Counselor Pelosi seconded by Counselor Cassidy. I was going to do a hand vote, but I think just to make the clerks work a little bit more, I'm going to, we'll put that on the screen.
Counselor Salvi? Closing the vote, and the motion carries 13.
I'd like to thank Counselor Squire and Counselor Helmer for presenting their reports. We'll see you at 7:05. Thank you.
......
Colleagues, thank you for your indulgence. We just had a couple of technical difficulties to work through, so thank you for that, and to the public as well. I'd like to call on Counselor Morgan, who's brought an item of attention to me. Go ahead, please.
Yes, Your Worship, sorry, I'll stand as counsel. Sorry, I was the cause of the extended delay because I was working with the clerks. I could not see all of my votes on my eScribe screen, so as I was checking them, I did not vote the way I intended on 5.6. I meant to support 5.5 but not 5.5. I did not vote the way I intended on 5.6. I meant to support 5.5 but not 5.6. That was not showing in the results. I couldn't see that. I was informed that that was the way that I had voted for and I meant to vote against. The clerk has then confirmed that, so my request would be that I could reconsider my vote on that. That was not my intention to vote the way I did. I think it's the first time I've done this in six years, so sorry about that.
All right, before we ask for reconsideration, can I get screens on, please? I apologize, colleagues. Just want to make sure we've got everybody on that we presume is on the screen, please, if you don't mind. All right, everybody that we are aware of to be here is here. All right, so with that, councillor Morgan is requesting reconsideration for his vote. Can you be specific on the item, please, councillor Morgan, what item that is?
Yes, and I wouldn't normally do this, except it was a 7-6 vote, which is why I thought it was important to actually correct my vote. It's 5.6 is the item.
We need a mover and a second for reconsideration, then it requires two thirds. Move by councillor Lewis, seconded by councillor Lehman. We'll put that to a vote for reconsideration.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councillor.
I tried to indicate that I'm unable to vote because I think it looks like my vote has been closed or blocked. It just shows me that there's a vote, but doesn't give me any option to click yes or no.
You can declare that verbally then, please.
Councillor Kabbag, if you could refresh your screen, it should be available to you. Otherwise, you can tell me verbally.
And yes, I vote yes, but I did try to vote, try to refresh, and it's still not working.
I vote yea, it just froze on me.
Councillor Hallmer?
Councillor Cassidy?
Councillor Hopkins?
I'm getting an error when I try and vote, so I'm in favor of reconsideration.
I am too, and I'm in favor.
I'm having the same problem. I vote yea.
Councillor Turner's gone. Yeah, it's not sinking. He's gone. He's not on. Closing the vote, and the motion carries 13 to 0. And we are having some difficulties with eScribe right at the moment. We all are. We're working on that.
All right, so I will ask the, for the benefit of the public, I will ask the clerk just to confirm the component that we are voting on, and so that keeps the public aware of what we are doing. This is a reconsidered vote. So if you would, councillor Hallmer?
Once you get through that, I have a question.
Once we get through the declaration of what the issue is? All right, thank you. So, could I ask you, councillor Hallmer, if it's not, can I just ask you to bring up your point now? Because the clerk is just still working through the mechanism of getting our system up again.
Sure. So it occurs to me that if we vote again, as we are going to, and the outcome is different, we will have to change again the amount in D, which we've already reconsidered.
That's right.
Once at the meeting, and reconsidering it another time is not easy.
Well, it's not only not easy, it's not protocol, and it's not what we do, but the clerks indicated to me that if that should change the, if that should change the outcome, and it changes the amount under D, 2.2D, then she will make an administrative decision to change that amount and advise us accordingly. You're looking cross-eyed. Councillor Hallmer?
I'll just wait till we get to that point, I guess.
Yeah, okay, sure. That's fair, and we'll let the clerk clarify that as well. That was the information given to me at that particular moment.
Mr. Mayor?
I'll ask, bear with me a moment. I'll just ask the clerk to confirm what's up on the screen for your benefit. Even though I've got a vote option up on my screen, but we are adjusting it, we're going to ignore that. Councillor Kabbag, did you have a question? I thought it was kind of, who was asking from the?
That was me. I did want to ask what we were voting on, but I will wait for the clerk to clarify.
Thank you. If you want to refresh your notes too, it is 5.6 under item 2.2, the mural facade grant, councillor.
Members of council, you're going to see the same vote come up. I've had to refresh my screen, so you're going to see the same vote come up again. Just ignore it. Mr. Mayor, we're back in business.
All right, so for the benefit of the public, and just to clarify for all council members, can you just confirm that we are dealing with 5.6? Because we have voted, we have agreed to reconsider the vote. Could you just, is there anything you need to clarify with that, clerk? Do we have a mover for the mural facade grant? Councillor Hallmer is seconded by councillor Hopkins. Thank you very much. This is to support the mural facade grant. All right? Yes is to the positive, and nay is to the contrary.
Closing the vote and the motion is lost, 6 to 7.
Now I'll come back to you, councillor Hallmer? If you wish.
Well, I think you need to deal with D because D is the wrong amount now. We've already considered it once. I think you probably have to waive the rules or something like that to get out of the quagmire we're in.
Let's, the clerk thought she had wisdom on this. Why don't we go to her to see if we have a response for your query?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, you do have the option to waive the council procedural bylaw. However, given that as a result of the vote, the number would have to change, I can also make an administrative change to the number as a result of the failed vote.
So I'm told that if the clerk makes that administrative correction based on that vote, it does not require a motion from council. If that's the pleasure of the committee, otherwise we have to have a motion to waive council procedure. I'll just open that up. Does anyone have a preference? Because I'll go either way on this at your pleasure. Colleagues, in the absence of feedback, I'm going to suggest that we allow the clerk, and it doesn't require a vote, I'm told, to make the adjustment to the amount that has been approved in 2.2D, unless you have objections. Clerk?
For your information, Ms. Barban has indicated that that number would be amended to 1.2 million.
Any comments or questions? We're trying to be, councillor Hallmer, please go ahead.
I don't want to belabor this point because we spent lots of time on these items already, but did we know that councillor Turner was not at the meeting when we went through this reconsideration?
Yes, and we knew that councillor Hillier would not be here either. That's correct.
Okay, for the record, I did not know that, and it would have influenced how I voted on reconsideration. Because I don't think it's frankly any further ahead to be like, "Well, Josh's vote is counted the way he wants, and now Turner's vote is not counted at all."
Just comment, if you would, clerk, on whether councillor Hillier's vote was counted.
I'm just sharing my opinion, that I do not think that that is a better outcome.
We have two individuals that indicated to the clerk, and then through me prior to the break, colleagues, that they were not able to carry on. One was councillor Hillier, the second was councillor Turner. Councillor Hopkins?
Yes, your worship. If I can make a comment here, I just do not feel this process has been very transparent. I feel very uncomfortable about the information that I am receiving as a member of this council.
So noted. Any other comments? Councillor Lewis?
Thank you, your worship. While I hear colleagues' concerns, I would just point out that in the previous vote where councillor Morgan voted in error, councillor Hillier was not present for that vote either, and councillor Turner voted in the affirmative. So the result, had councillor Turner been here, assuming his vote hadn't changed, would have been 7-7, and we would have still had a defeat on a tie.
Any other comments or questions? The intent, to be clear, colleagues, was not to hold that information back from colleagues. As a matter of practice, when someone does leave the meeting, we do not declare them to colleagues. Councillor Cassidy?
Thank you, your worship. I don't think that, you know, and I don't want to translate. I'm saying I agree with what councillor Hallmer was saying, and what I believe is that it's not about the outcome of the vote. It's about councillor or deputy mayor Morgan wanted to correct the voting record to reflect exactly how he wished to vote. And in correcting the voting record and making sure his vote was counted accordingly, we weren't considering councillor Turner's vote, and that, so that it would have been recorded properly as well, and instead it wasn't recorded at all.
I'm sorry, are you saying councillor Turner's vote was not, oh, you mean in this particular voting phase? Clerk, give us some wisdom here.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, on the record, the previous vote only had 13 people voting as well. There were two members that did not vote. So, and it's 13 again. So, in the first vote, councillor Hillier and Kaia Baga were not voting. And in this one, councillor Turner and councillor Hillier. I just wanted to clarify that.
I have councillor Kaia Baga on the list. Please go ahead.
I, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to echo the same comments that I don't think it's about the turnout at the vote. I think it's more about the person who originally voted on the motion, whose vote is no longer on the record.
And I've noted that as well. Thank you very much, colleagues. Any other comments or questions? Clerk?
Given the concern, the only other suggestion that I have for you is that the council procedural bylaw only allows you to reconsider once in a meeting. There's nothing preventing a councillor from a subsequent meeting at council for asking for a reconsideration on the matter.
So I'm advised by the clerk that that can be brought up in a subsequent meeting for reconsideration. So, any other comments, colleagues? All right, with that then, thank you very much. I will now turn us to our next item on the agenda. And that is the third report of the Corporate Services Committee. Councillor Cassidy, if you would, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'll put the entire report on the floor. I have not heard from anybody.
I understand 5.1 is, it's been requested that be dealt with separately. Chair Cassidy, any other items that colleagues wish to have dealt with separately? Back to you, councillor Cassidy.
Okay, thank you. I'll put the entire report except for 5.1. It, I just wanted to point out, one item is the provincial dedicated gas tax funding has been awarded, and it will be transferred directly to the London Transit Commission. It's the money that we get from the province for transit operations, and it's this time $11 million, which is a 4.6% increase over last time. Other than that, I'll put everything else on the floor except for 5.1.
Any comments on any items with the exception of 5.1? Councillor Hallmer?
I mentioned this at the Transit Commission, we were talking about this item, but I did want to commend the provincial government doing the right thing on the gas tax in particular. You know, this year, because of the pandemic, the volume of fuel significantly impacted in a negative way. And as colleagues will recall, the total gas tax funding is based on the volume of fuel that's purchased. So the province has had to move to make sure that there's not a negative impact to transit agencies because of those changes that have come about because of the pandemic. I think they've really done the right thing here, making sure there is some stability at a time when transit agencies desperately needed that, and we're facing a lot of really difficult financial challenges. So kudos to the provincial government on the gas tax front this year. It's wonderful to have that money coming into the city of London to make sure there's some financial stability for London Transit.
Thank you. Any other comments with respect to all but 5.1? Seeing none, let's call the question. Seeing none, let's call the question.
Councillor Squire? Councillor Squire has indicated he is voting yes, the motion carries 13 to 0.
Councillor Cassidy?
Your worship, and that leaves us with 5.1, it was a submission by councillor Kaaybaga and deputy mayor Morgan, uh that the federal and provincial governments be advised that municipal council um requests two levels of government to work together as soon as possible to enhance paid sick leave, and this is in response to COVID-19, where a number of people and uh have been going to work with symptoms, there there are outbreaks that have been identified in various regions uh in the province of people going to work that are symptomatic uh because uh they can't afford to not go to work, so that is what uh was the instigator for this submission by the councillors.
Thank you very much, any comments or questions, councillor Squire?
So I I won't be supporting this, um not because I'm I don't know whether this would be a good idea, or I don't know if this would be a bad idea, I don't know whether it fits within the current policy framework of the Government Responsible, which is the Government of Canada, which has a lot of priorities with regard to uh COVID-19. You know, people may say, well, there's no harm in doing this, it's fine, it's it's okay. Um if you have listened to me occasionally, councillor, at all, you'll know that I like uh governments to stay within their own jurisdiction and stay within their own policy considerations on areas that are exclusively their jurisdiction. What if in my submission you end up with is people will be coming to us saying, here's a matter that's not within your jurisdiction, but I'd like you to advocate with regard to it. And what I say to people when they do that is I point them to the correct uh area of government, and I say, this is the person or the body you should be advocating to, and I will point you in that in that particular direction. There's also a danger that the reverse could happen. Um uh you know, I'm I'm just thinking if if the federal government or some of the local federal MPs said to us, government of Ontario and government of London, you know, it would be great if if uh Ontario Works was increased, so we'd like the government of Ontario to think about that. And maybe we'd like to think if the city of London can look towards supplementing those monies in appropriate cases during COVID. Um I'm not sure how we would receive it, but um I don't want to see the reverse happening. I don't want to see other levels of government coming to us suggesting we should do something in policy areas. So this may be a wonderful idea, it may be something the government of Canada will want to um institute. That may indeed be the case, but again, I'm very strong on governments staying within their own jurisdiction.
Thank you, any other comments or questions, councillor Hopkins?
Yeah, thank you, uh your worship, and I want to thank councillor Kaaybaga for bringing this forward. I was very pleased to see it and and thank the committee for supporting this uh motion. In particular, uh the two governments, the provincial and federal governments, working together as soon as possible. This is strictly about COVID, the two-week sick leave is a conversation at AMO, and in particular, the Large Urban Caucus, I chaired the Large Urban Caucus. Many municipalities have come forward with motions from their municipalities encouraging both governments to to come up with a solution. And uh not only AMO, but uh Ontario big-city mayors as well have come out very strongly. It tends to be a lot of this happening, pointing fingers, and this is about encouraging governments to work together. I know uh there's many uh Londoners out there that if they have to stay home for two weeks, they may have opportunities to dig deep into their savings account and make uh ends made, but there's a lot of Londoners out there that don't have savings accounts. And maybe um um you know, uh you know, go to work when 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 they shouldn't be, so I am hoping that uh my colleagues here will support not only um this motion, but the the uh importance of encouraging governments uh working together to come up with solutions that help uh residents deal with with COVID and and uh the financial impacts that they experience.
Thank you, councillor Van Holst.
Yes, thank you, your worship, and through you, I have a couple of questions, the first one, uh and I know we've done a fair bit of lobbying of uh upper levels of government, what typically would happen with a a request like this?
The um if the direction from council is for the the mayor to uh to formally write to them, that is not specific in this motion, uh but that would be the action that we would take, but since it says be advised, uh I think implicitism in that is that the mayor would uh that I would on behalf of council uh prepare a letter consistent with the motion itself.
Thank you, your worship, do you often receive a response from those letters?
Uh the honest answer is it depends, uh usually, but but not always. Sometimes it depends on the issue, to be fair, and I haven't done a a formal um reckoning of the letters that we send uh and the kinds of responses we get. You'll note that when we did, when we handled the one issue regarding ranked ballot, that morphed into me making a representation uh on behalf of London, if I might say, all municipalities of the province uh to the uh Provincial Justice Committee, and having a discussion with the premier specifically on this issue. Uh so uh it can take a response in different forms, and so uh I I can't presume what the response will be. But if it's the dr- if it's the direction of council to advise the federal provincial governments, that would be uh that would be on the mayor's office to do that on behalf of council.
Thank you for that helpful answer, and I guess my next question uh through you to staff is, do we, what's our policy for this? Because I think people might be interested for the for the our city corporation.
Are you talking about jurisdictionally, councillor Van Holst, or what specifically are you asking?
No, it's just not, I I believe it's our policy that um where we have people uh quarantined for um 14 days, but just because we're sending this out, uh I think in this in this discussion for the people listening at home, it might be uh might be helpful to know what we as a city do, what's our present policy regarding uh someone who's who gets sick uh or showing symptoms of COVID.
I'll give that to Ms. Livingston.
Pardon me, um Mr. Mayor, if the question could be repeated, please.
Councillor?
Okay, thank you, uh Ms. Livingston, uh we're lobbying the provincial and federal governments to ask them to work together to uh deal with paid sick leave for somebody who has a a COVID symptoms, uh what are, what's our policy now, I realize that may perhaps it depends on the uh the agreement, but uh what what's our policy generally uh for the city in a situation like this?
Now, through you, through you, your worship, if an employee is unwell, we ask that they stay home and they have access to uh sick benefits, uh those benefits vary a little depending on the um group of employees we're talking about, but that is what our employees uh would access. We also have instituted where uh employees are directed to stay at home uh through the health unit because of COVID. Uh for a number of reasons, we've instituted um a pandemic leave that uh also can support them to uh continue to be um supported uh and not uh necessarily use up all their vacation or any other benefits that they may have, so there are a number of options for our employees.
Councillor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Kaaybaga.
Thank you, um I just wanted to uh make uh reiterate my comments that I made um at uh committee, and the reason why I moved this motion, uh understanding that the city of London, the corporation, may have um great support for the employees, which I commend and appreciate. Um this is to support other Londoners across the city who perhaps do not have these options and do not have the support system and the benefits to be able to leave their jobs and 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 stay at home sick. Uh it's important to 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 also bring up the numbers that we do have, the the numbers of COVID cases. There was slightly higher number uh in cases uh with within the uh community, um the BIPOC community in London, uh even though uh they're a smaller number uh here in the city of London, which shows the disparities and the gaps that um show up in COVID because of reasons such as people do not have adequate jobs, um live in precarious um situations. Uh therefore, um us asking the two levels of government is not to commend them or to uh get involved in the ways that they do their work, is to support the community members. COVID has affected uh Canada in general, and we do know that we are s- we're receiving a lot of support from the federal and and provincial uh levels, but at the end of the day, we deal with it as a city. Uh when we have to report out our numbers from the health unit, we're reporting London numbers, uh we're not reporting um numbers outside of the city of London, so that shows that it is affecting us, it is affecting the way that we do our business, the way that we uh deal with our cities, so if our government, municipal government uh is here to do the work of the Londoners, uh it's also important that we stand in support, especially when we know and and we have the data to support that this is really important uh in in reducing um the COVID cases. And also, it's important to stand with the Londoners who do not have the benefits that other people like ourselves here at the city of London, at the Corporation of London, um have access to. So I encourage my colleagues to support this motion, and it is not a motion to get involved in their business, it's a motion saying that we do support our communities and we stand with them, and we ask that they consider and work together and not pass it around, we don't know where it actually is going to fall, but we we come together asking that they just support paid sick days for people who are showing higher numbers in COVID cases, yet there are smaller numbers and considered to be minorities in our community, so. And everyone else is affected by COVID, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lehman.
Um yeah, you know, I think during this COVID period, um a lot of a lot of folks have really suffered and 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 need assistance of governments. Um there are three levels of government, um municipal and provincial and federal, and we've all uh taken action uh as we have tonight, uh by looking at aspects of a recovery plan for London, uh because that's within our jurisdiction. Um I think uh if I, we were looking at making changes to eh enhancing sick leave or other aspects of EI changes uh that are COVID-related, that the uh federal government has implemented and is would be considering, um that would be uh, I would engage in that debate if I were an MP on Parliament Hill. Um I think that's where this uh debate lies, uh not uh on this i- in this uh council. Uh I think we are doing the right thing uh with um such things as recovery plan. Um that's where we can have real effectiveness. Uh it, this is not in our jurisdiction, and I think it just opens the door to uh down the road to other aspects uh of uh you know, federal government uh responsibilities, and uh uh I think we should just stick to uh you know, the jurisdiction that that we have as a city.
Thank you, any other comments, uh councillor Kaaybaga, you've spoken to the issue, uh so I'm going to call on councillor Holmer if I could, unless you've got a point of order? Councillor Kaaybaga?
It's not a point of order, uh it's just a question to staff.
Uh no, I you've Go ahead with your question, please.
Thank you, um I would like to ask through you, uh mayor, to uh the clerk um if this is something that we've done before in the past, whether we have submitted a letter of support of other issues to other uh levels of governments or not.
I'm sure that was a point of clarification, good for you, uh councillor, uh clerk, I wonder if you could respond, please?
Uh through you, Mr. Mayor, uh council does from time to time um through a resolution and a motion um uh seek uh either support uh something that another level government is doing, or asks another level government to support uh some direction that council wishes them to do, so it 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 does happen uh occasionally.
Councillor Holmer?
Uh thank you, I hope that uh colleagues will support this resolution coming from Corporate Services Committee, I think councillor Kaaybaga and deputy mayor Morgan are on to something really good here, and uh it's something that many other municipalities have already done, you know, um the mayors and chairs of all the municipalities and the GTHA, for example, have been pressing the province and the federal government to figure out paid sick leave because they recognize that this is probably the single biggest policy change that could happen that would help limit the spread of of COVID-19 right now. And you know, this is a major intervention that could be very positive and limit the damage to society and the economy from uh COVID-19. And the federal government has already acted, they've done some things already. Um I want to clarify that, you know, this is an area, labor, where the federal government has some areas where they're responsible, specific industries, and the province is responsible for basically all the rest. And so it is an area of shared jurisdiction uh because of our lovely constitution. And it is something that we, as a council, I think, can take a position on, can encourage them to work out something that's going to improve the situation for workers who otherwise wouldn't be paid to stay home. And you know, the problem with the federal program is that it takes a while before you're gonna find out whether you have it. And what people really need is, I want to not go to work and know I'm gonna get paid right now, so they can do the right thing and stay home. And that's the intervention that's needed, I think that's what the federal government and the province need to work out, that's what various municipalities have been encouraging them to do, uh because I think people can see how it would help with the public health situation, even the Toronto Medical Officer of Health has advocated for the province to take action on paid sick days. Now, it's very clear to me that the province doesn't really want to do this, uh our own MPP Peggy Sadler has brought brought in motion um in the legislature to have them act on that, and they voted against it. And so I think the pressure needs to be increased, and I think the city of London are taking a position saying paid sick leave is a good idea, we would like the province and the federal government to figure it out. Uh that's a good thing we can do on basically the most important issue that we're dealing with, which is the pandemic and its impact on our city. So, you know, I don't want to take positions on every single thing that the province is responsible for, but on a couple of issues, on on things that are really important, I think it is helpful, and uh this is one of those issues.
Thank you, any other comments or questions? Colleagues, I just want to clarify something that uh comment I made with resp- from councillor Van Holst, what happens next with the motion should it pass? Uh typically, when the wording is done this way, and I've uh received some advice from the clerk, it would come from the clerk's office. If the motion is directed that the mayor be advised, be requested to do something, then of course I I'll respond accordingly. Uh and it's, we've done this both ways, uh sometimes we've had motions where uh I have been requested to do something specifically, and sometimes uh we have a a broader uh motion like this, in which case the clerk uh would send that out on behalf of council. So just to make you aware, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. Just a technical uh at one of at one of the computers here, colleagues.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 11 to 2.
Thanks very much. Councillor Cassidy? Counselor Cassidy.
That's my report.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'll now turn to the second reporter, the Civic Works Committee, and call on our Chair, Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will not be as quick as the prior one. I have been given notice to pull item nine, being two point one two, the London Community Recovery Network. Item two point five, the contract award for the downtown loop, which is number eleven on this agenda. Number twelve, which is IM two point six, being the new sidewalks in twenty twenty one. And item sixteen, being five point one, being the deferred matters list. Wondering if there's anything else colleagues would like pulled.
Anything else colleagues would like to have dealt with separately? Seeing none, Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you. Key highlights of this one in regards to the Transportation Advisory Committee. They've elected Mr. Foster and Mr. Khan as Chair and Vice Chair and have submitted the work plan that's in there. The rest of those items were all unanimously supported at committee with nothing out of regulation. No regularities for tenders or anything else within this report. And item thirteen being two point seven was a previous request to the previous CWC committee that has now come back. That, so I'll put all those motion, all those items on the floor with the exception of the ones that have been pulled.
Does anyone wish to make any comment on any of the items that have not been pulled? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries thirteen to zero.
Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you. Item nine being two point one two, the London Community Recovery Network Ideas for Action by Municipal Council. This one was pulled by Counselor Lewis and Counselor Lehman, who have, in advance of council tonight, circulated a draft amendment to all of council that came in around noon into your inbox. So I'll look to them to speak to the item and move their motion.
Anyone wish to comment? Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. I drew the short straw earlier, so I get to go first, and Counselor Lehman can add on to anything I'll have to say after that. As Counselor Pelosi indicated, we did circulate deferral motion asking that this be referred back to civic administration for further consideration and report back to Civic Works at a future meeting after the downtown loop construction has been completed. And there is it being noted that this idea was not part of the core area action plan. It is something that's come out of the London Community Recovery Network. And it speaks to something that I've said repeatedly tonight. We're about to.
Sir, I'll just get that moved seconded by Counselor Lehman. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. And it just speaks to something that I've raised already tonight, which is, we are about to, in fact, later in this report, we will be discussing a tender on the downtown loop construction. And I think that this is, you know, we're going to tear things up, we're going to have construction signs in place, advising of detours and and all of those other things. And I think that it's not the appropriate time to start filling up the downtown with wayfinding signs on top of the construction signs. I I think that this is something that staff can come back to us with in reasonable time down the road with how this will look. I'm not opposed to the idea, I just think again that the timing is wrong on this.
Counselor Helmer.
First, I'd just like to clarify through the Chair, what precisely the timing is. Are we talking about when the downtown loop construction project is fully completed? And when would that be?
Counselor Lewis, do you wish to respond?
I'm certainly happy to respond. The intent of the motion is to say that the implementation would happen after the downtown loop construction has been completed. Not that staff couldn't come back to us with an implementation plan around that prior to the construction being completed, but that we'd be looking to do an implementation after construction, after the construction signs are cleared out and that barrier is out of the way before we move forward.
Counselor Helmer.
So unfortunately, I'm getting more annoyed as time goes on, so I'm going to try and dial in my comments and be as reasonable as I possibly can, despite the fact that I'm getting pretty angry. The time to do wayfinding should not be determined by the construction project in the way that Counselor Lewis and Counselor Lehman are suggesting. First of all, the construction project, yes, it covers a number of streets in the downtown over multiple years. But it's only part of the core. And over the last few years, we've had construction going on in various parts of the core every year. And in many parts of the core, including in Old East Village, that is going to be the situation for several years in a row. We're going to have Adelaide under construction, we have Dundas under construction, we have King Street under construction. When construction is happening is not the time to not do other things because the construction is happening, especially things like wayfinding. Wayfinding is really important when everything is screwed up and all the businesses are being impacted by construction, and we're trying to make it as easy as possible for people to find all the great things that are down there. So it's actually not the way that is being suggested, where you're like, well, we have to wait for everything to be done before we can do wayfinding. What we should be doing is wayfinding and construction, and in the areas where the construction is happening, we should make sure the wayfinding is really helpful. In fact, that's what happens with a lot of the core construction now, is we put up really good signage that helps people know. How do I get from here to there? How can I make it across? Is that thing going to be open next week? Those things are actually part of the core construction projects now. And I think this wayfinding project, you know, should definitely not be delayed. And if anything, should be coincident with the downtown loop construction project. And I would say it's covering a big area. So it's not as though it's just in that area, but even in that area where there will be the construction impacts, I actually think the value is more rather than less for the wayfinding. So I hope the idea of the referral and sort of do nothing until we've got everything settled, that that's soundly defeated, we just move on and and fund the wayfinding project, which I think is a good one.
Counselor Robbins.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship, and I am not going to be supporting this amendment. And the reasons for not supporting it as much as I'm trying to understand why we're having all these changes and why we are not supporting the downtown area. It shows that we should be doing more, not less. I think supporting businesses and putting up signages when there is a construction site is more important than ever. So I would encourage council not to support this referral back and bring forward the motion that was supported at committee.
Thank you. Other comments? Counselor Lehman.
Just through you, Mayor, to to staff, during construction, will there be signage planned around the construction area to help people find their way around?
Ms. Chair.
I thank you, Your Worship. Yes, there will be wayfinding as part of construction. That is usually fairly specific to what people need to do to navigate the work zone and adjacent streets. This would cover a broader area. It would be permanent installations. We would not put any permanent signings related to this program in the active construction zone unless we knew it could stay in place.
Counselor Lehman.
Thank you. You know, this is, it is about a timing issue. You know, I take issue with what has been said. I think at the appropriate time, this would be a good thing going forward, but not when we're going to tear up streets and and people are not going to be back downtown. You know, until that dust has settled. And then when we know where things lie, then let's put out a helpful means to get around. But not at this particular time. So I would encourage folks to support this.
Thank you. Counselor Van Hooft.
Thank you, Worship. And through you, my comment is that it seems to me the timing issue is getting into operations. As council, I think we want to decide if we like the idea of wayfinding and if we're willing to support it with the budget. When the best time to put up a particular sign happens is should be a, something I would expect our our staff to take to take care of and and make those decisions. So I I don't, I won't support this motion for that reason. I believe that our staff can make those decisions.
Thank you. Counselor Kaibaga.
Thank you through you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo the same sentiments. I don't want to repeat the comments that my colleagues have said, but I would really hope that we would continue to encourage Londoners to to come to to downtown and support downtown in such a difficult time such as construction. There is a lot of campaigns that we do during. There's a lot of campaigns that we do during that time that we we tried to do to support people, to 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 bring people to come downtown and that we've done during COVID as well. And 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 I I've seen the numbers, the Ontario Business Association put out an article that spoke on how businesses felt with the local campaigns that happened to try and get people to support local downtown businesses when they're going through COVID. So I would, I would, I would assume that that would be the same sentiment during construction, especially while we're going through recovery. My hope is that people will continue to participate in those campaigns, especially, especially if construction is going to be happening in parallel with the recovery of COVID as we continue to await on vaccinations and see where we're going to be at next year, the year after. I think that every bit of investment that we make is important, is going to be needed and 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 it's going to have an impact. So I would encourage our colleagues not to support this motion and continue to support the staff recommended motion as well.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Yes, I'm looking at the wording of the motion, and I understand the comments that many of my colleagues are making. I I wonder if the intent of the colleagues moving the motion is to seek clarification on the implementation timelines, in which case the words after the downtown loop construction might not be necessary, because staff could certainly report back with, here's the implementation plan, Civic Works Committee, here's the timeframes, here's when what signs would go up, when. I'm not, I mean, I'm not projecting exactly what staff would report back from, but I'm obviously, that's up to them. But I wonder if that's more the concern. The seems to be the sticking point is there's restriction to after the downtown loop construction has been completed, and it may be appropriate to have some signage, you know, phased throughout that entire process, as the city engineer has mentioned. So maybe there's some comfort in that report to Civic Works Committee without the caveat of after the construction.
Any other, oh, sorry, I have Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Worship. I I was, I was waiting because I didn't know if Counselor or Deputy Mayor Morgan was looking for a response from the movers and secunders, but I'm I'm here, I'm ready to speak. So as with not just COVID, but also construction, and and downtown has had a number of construction projects, road projects that were necessary and needed to fix underground infrastructure and things like that. But it's been hard on the downtown merchants. Everybody knows that. I the fact that we would wait to welcome people downtown or wait until after construction is over to to do things in our downtown that would make it easier for people to navigate the downtown, to find the places they want to go. And, you know, it says specifically in the report, it's not just about going from one specific area to another, but it's about navigating the entire downtown and going through the downtown and seeing where all the destination spots are. And I know from, you know, different cities I've traveled in, in Canada and in other places, the best cities are the ones that help somebody who's new to the place to get around. And I would say that, you know, there are probably a lot of Londoners as as well that would really benefit from this, from these wayfindings, especially as we start to do new and and more interesting things with our downtown. It's, it's, it's an, it's a way to encourage people to come downtown and to be downtown and not wait for the dust to settle, because frankly, when the dust settles, we might be left with not much left there. We need people coming downtown. And I know from the getting the updates on the the rapid transit project, the construction that's being planned, that they expect all all routes to be open to pedestrians throughout that construction. So as part of the construction, they will be making it as easy as possible for people to continue to be downtown, to come downtown, to go to the places they want to go. I see this wayfinding as complementary to the temporary signage that will be going up during construction. And if you read the report very carefully, they they talk about this as as almost an incremental approach. They will be doing some areas as sort of a pilot, seeing what works, seeing what's effective, seeing what people like, and building on that as they go. So it's not something that's going to be bam, put in place from day one. It's something that will grow according to the report. So I won't support the referral. And I hope that this gets defeated so that that we can move this forward.
Thank you. Counselor Squire.
I think the discussion that we're having is sort of a, for me, it's a really good reminder of what I said to myself at the beginning of this meeting. We've heard a lot of talk about this wayfaring, how it relates to construction, you know, how it relates to enabling people to get around downtown. One counselor said, you know, why aren't we supporting downtown? We, you know, I we've all voted for many things downtown. Let me just be clear, it doesn't mean I have to vote for everything for downtown. I I'm a counselor. And I I'm able to make those decisions and make those votes. So I don't think any of us should be angry. I don't think we should be questioning other counselors. We we have a right to do this. My point is this. Almost none of the conversation about supporting this motion mentioned COVID at all. It was all about finding your way around downtown in any circumstances. Dealing with construction, that doesn't have anything to COVID. And and here's my, this is the point I made at the beginning. What we're doing, it seems to me, is to some extent using the COVID funds for economic development and economic enhancement that doesn't necessarily relate to COVID. And I go back to the first meetings I had when I sat down with Counselor Pelosi and the group I was working with, we said it has to be COVID related. If I knew today that we were going to use this as an economic development fund for downtown or anywhere, I would have approached it in a completely different way, but I was told that the work I was to do was to be specifically related to COVID. And if you want to say, well, the the reason it's related to COVID is because we're going to need economic stimulation after COVID, quite frankly, you, we all know that applies to every area of the city. Every area of the city needs something post-COVID. So this is what I'm getting at, is that really what we're doing today is is allocating funds for enhancement and economic development, end of story. We are not relating the expenditure of funds to COVID. Now, it's easy to do it on every occasion. You just say, oh, yeah, and COVID has hurt the economy, so this is a valid COVID expenditure. That's pretty broad. It's pretty broad. So I'm not going to support the amendment. I'm more concerned about what I've heard in terms of its this this relationship to COVID. So again, I don't think any of us should be getting angry or saying we're getting angry. I don't think we should be condemning colleagues who are who are examining expenditures of money. We have the right to do that, and it doesn't anger me when when people disagree with me on where money should be spent.
I normally don't make comments, but I'm sure no one would disagree with you, Counselor. Other comments or questions, though, please? So colleagues, this is, we'll call the vote. This is a vote for the referral. And I'll ask the clerk to put the question up.
Counselor Helmer and Counselor Pelosi. Counselor Helmer. Closing the vote and the motion is lost four to ten.
Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you. I'll, there's a regional staff recommendation that I can put on the floor.
Thank you. We've spoken some length on this issue, but does anyone wish to comment on the original motion? Councillor Lewis.
Thank you, worship. I'm going to be brief. While the deferral may have failed, councillor Squire has raised an excellent point to me, which is I do not see how this. Is connected to COVID. And I look at the contract for the tender, just a little later on in our agenda here. And there are pages of pedestrian detour, wayfinding signage included in that, some of which is at the expense of the contractor, by the way. So councillor Squire has convinced me that I don't actually support this one as a COVID recovery measure. It may well be economic stimulus, but I don't see how it is tied to COVID.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Haller.
Just on the main motion, I'll try and explain why I think it's connected to COVID. I think it's a reasonable thing to ask about. So the downtown has the double whammy of having office workers have shifted so much to work from home. And retailers and food businesses and entertainment venues that are extremely severely impacted by COVID. So you have all the people who are normally down there supporting economic activity not down there. And then businesses that are having to shut down or be at reduced capacity. So it's not even, it's it's not even as bad as being at the same kind of business. In a suburban mall. It's even worse because your customers who usually would be there are at home. And so even for takeout and and orders to people's workplaces. So it it's a very challenging time. For businesses in the core who have that storefront presence. I frankly haven't articulated it earlier because I think it is kind of screamingly obvious. What the impacts are on those kind of businesses in the core of the city because you've got so many people working from home. At the same time as all these businesses are getting the measures that are impacting their operations. So I I do think that that's one of the reasons why when we go to the business community and we get people involved in the Community Recovery Network and we're like. What kind of ideas do you have around recovery from this pandemic? The idea of doing things in the core is coming up because it has been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. So yes, it has impacted people all over the place, right? Manufacturers out in industrial areas, they have their own kinds of impacts. But this particular part and this particular kind of business has been very severely impacted. And so I think that's why we're seeing so many ideas coming forward on that front. This one, you know, the idea of doing the wayfinding. I think it does have lasting benefit beyond the pandemic, which is a great thing about it. It's not a reason to not support it. It it's, I think, a nice, long, longer term thing that would help later on. So, you know, I I'm just going to try and articulate that piece. I think this is the last item we have about the Community Recovery Network for today's meeting. And I did want to say more general comment. Thank you very much to the people who've been working on the London Community Recovery Network. It was a lot to ask for people to step up and get involved in this while they were doing all the other things. And I know many of the colleagues around the horseshoe of virtual and otherwise stepped up to lead some of the priority action tables. I really appreciate your work on that. And many of the members of the community, people who are running businesses, big organizations. Arts organizations that are just trying to figure out how they're going to help their members get through this. You know, they have lots of other things they could have been doing and I'm really glad that they made time to work on this because it's really important work. And my expectation is not that everything is going to be perfect or every idea is going to be a home run, but that we're as a group going to try. We're going to try our best and we're going to put everything on the table and we're going to do as much as we can to get people through the pandemic. And I'm not happy with some of these decisions we've made here tonight. That's why I'm angry. I'm not going to pretend like I'm not. But I do think that we we have to, as a group, keep pushing and keep pushing and aim as high as we possibly can. To make make as many of these things happen as we can and that they're done well. So, you know, at the end of the day, you know, I I won't be angry forever. But I did want to recognize the work of all the people who are volunteering to help us on this Community Recovery Network because without that, we wouldn't have any of these ideas.
Any other comments or questions? Perhaps I could ask the Deputy Mayor to take the chair.
Sure, I'll go to the mayor.
Thanks very much, colleagues. I am supporting the main motion here and I think comments about this having. Short term and long term benefits, I think, is very, very clear. And I think it's important because. The London Community Recovery Network is all about that. It's all about recovery. And we've got a long way to go. This is. We we've had some pretty positive COVID numbers in the sense that while it's not necessarily been great for those who have been. Healthwise impacted of late, London has done well in the last while. So credit to Londoners and the actions they've taken as it relates to this particular. Motion. I think what it does is I think it does in light of what has happened as a result of COVID. I think it really does try to help stimulate some of the impacts downtown. And it does give me a chance, if I can echo councillor Halmer's comments, who's been very involved from our initial task forces now. But to do a reach out, if I can, as well, to thank those who participated so so keenly and positively. From our own city council, from our own staff, who has showed great leadership positions. From our various community organizations and a number of business leaders and business organizations and and ultimately committed Londoners. We owe you a great debt of gratitude for taking us to where we are today. We're not done. We have more work to do. And you'll see that by virtue of where we are in terms of the reserve that's been set aside for community recovery. We've still got work in front of us. So I'm sure we'll have a number of these discussions and debates from time to time. But I will tell you this, I think what we've started here tonight with a number of the projects that we've improved, and we've improved many. So if I take it from the positive perspective, there's a lot we can build on as we go forward. And I look forward to working with those groups and all and all of our community as we work towards this broader recovery. You know, I was saying the other day, colleagues, that some people say you can see the. The light at the end of the tunnel. And I said, sometimes it's been kind of hard to find the tunnel. But I'm sensing a much more positive spirit within the community. Of course, we have concerns around the third wave of the pandemic, which sounds like when less than than if. But having said, more than if, but having said it, I will also say that that I think steps like this. Go a positive way that have long lasting results. So as a result, I'll be supporting that. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I'll return the chair to the mayor.
Any other final comments? Seeing none, let's take the vote.
Councillor Halmer and Councillor Van Meerebergen.
The voting is not coming up for me.
Did you wish to vote verbally?
Just refreshed. It's there. One sec.
Closing the vote and the motion carries nine to five.
Thank you, Councillor Pelosi.
Thank you. I will now put item eleven being two point five on the floor. This is the contract award tender for the downtown loop. And municipal infrastructure improvements for phase one. This had one vote against at committee. So it's been pulled for the committee member can vote as they wish at council as they did at committee.
So noted. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries twelve to two.
Thank you. I will now put, well. Item twelve or two point six is nine, the new sidewalks in two thousand and twenty one infrastructure reconstruction projects. At Civic Works Committee voted to have a public participation meeting. As the correspondents have come in throughout the week, we now have in a a large amount of correspondence. Which would potentially put the next Civic Works meeting into a late hour. Currently, we have twenty people asking, which would be a hundred, potentially a hundred minutes of PPM. Which could potentially run it into the next committee meeting following Civic Works. So Civic Administration was recommending that we do a special meeting of Civic Works. Just to allow for the public participation meeting to occur without any technical issues. That would still allow it to reach the next council meeting without delaying any. Anything. So looking to colleagues. As to their preference, especially Civic Works members who would be there, the Civic Administration is suggesting. March fifteenth. For for those who are parents know that March break's been canceled. So March fifteenth would would find a time to take on the delegations. First, the Civic Work sidewalk program. The clerk would have appropriate wording that she was talking to, so I would turn to her for.
Good, clerk.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. And actually, it was me that raised the logistics issue for us. If one committee meeting runs into another. Meeting, we're not able to run eScribe and web stream for two meetings concurrently. So the wording would be that the request for delegate, it it would be the approving the recommendation. However, B part would be amended to say that the request for delegations by the following individuals. With respect to this matter be approved for a special meeting of the Civic Works Committee to be held on March fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Or another date that week if that date does not work for the Civic Works Committee. And then it would be further amended by by allowing, adding the names of those other people who asked for delegation on the added agenda today.
So to be clear, clerk, and I just want to be clear on this, that you are, that this is two parts. One is to recommend, is to go forward with the recommendation of staff. And secondly, to have the. Have this special public participation meeting. Is that clear? Am I clear on that?
That's correct. It's it's recommending an amended motion and it's amended in B. To refer the delegations to the special meeting.
All right, well, let's have some conversation around this. We can have councillor Squire first on the list.
We would need it moved in second.
I'm sorry, please?
As it is amended, we would need a mover and a seconder. And I believe councillor Close is moving it. We would need a seconder.
Councillor Close, are you moving?
I am.
And seconded by, I have several. I've I've just seen councillor Squire first, so he'll second the motion. Discussion. Councillor Squire to start.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And first of all, I I did not bring forward the suggestion of a special meeting to deal with this. But I but I think it is the right thing to do and I'll I'll tell you why I believe so. This is something that has generated a huge amount of public interest. Far outside of the wards that are involved directly in this. And it is probably something that. Every councillor is going to have an interest in it because of the issues involved. It involves the issues. And I'm not going to get into the issues and and how I feel about them or what what the delegations are saying. I just want to deal with it from the point of view of timing. So there's a large contingent of people on on either side of this issue who want to have an opportunity. To speak to the committee about it. It goes to the basics of many issues. It goes to the basic, basic issues of when should we make. Exceptions to the London Plan. When should that happen? How much input should should citizens have in areas that are 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 within the London Plan and relate to their streets? The importance, the real importance of accessibility issues in our city. All of those issues are moving around together. The challenge that I have run into in the last two weeks is is getting those arguments in a sort of reasonable manner. So they can present it as a delegation. And even as recently as this evening. I received information from staff that was being requested by one of the delegations so they could prepare their delegation. So we're still in the process. At least from my point of view, of getting information for delegates to provide the input that they need to do. My view of this issue is that it 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 cries out, as as a court case would, for some kind of reasonable solution. Otherwise, quite frankly, we're going to end up with a decision that may be made by council. That is going to make some people very unhappy and feel aggrieved, no matter which side they are on. It's it's from my point of view, that difficult an issue. So I think we will continue to have challenges from the point of view of the community. That I represent in terms of their ability to create their delegations and have adequate information for those. Delegations if we move on Tuesday to deal with this issue. If we give people till March sixteenth and we have an exclusive meeting to deal with this particular issue, which I think should get councilwide attention. I think it's a more appropriate way way to deal with this issue. I also feel, and I'll say it again, that there should be some kind of reasonable solution. And I I. I'm certainly going to be working towards doing that so that we, as a council, do not have to pick one side. Of an important element of our community over another important element. Pitting communities against accessibility is not a good idea. Not a good idea. It's not good for us. It's not good for our communities. And it's not good for all of those people who have accessibility challenges in the city. So that being said, I think the reasonable approach is to give the community that time, give staff that time to provide information. And have it presented in a reasonable fashion at one meeting where we are not under time pressure. So that's why I seconded the motion. And I'm hopeful that it that it will get support. It's it's, the decision's going to have to be made one way or another. As long as it could be made such that that staff still has time to implement whatever decision is made. I think that's the important point.
I just want to clarify if I can, councillor Squire, you said March sixteen, but I know you meant March fifteen. Thank you. And I do know that this will have full some debate and discussion as we hear from from our. Citizens with respect to the PPM meeting. I would also mention again to your reference that what we're doing is receiving the report. And and agreeing to a a meeting, a PPM with a number of, special meeting with a number of delegates. Sure.
People keep saying the word public participation meeting. It's it's not a public participation. It's a meeting where people have asked for delegation status. And will be making those delegations. I just wanted to clarify that. So it's not a meeting you can just show up and speak.
Fair enough. I corrected you on the date. You corrected me on the term of reference. That's only fair. So with that in mind, I'm not sure if colleagues have. Anything else they wish to discuss at this point, but let's let's hear from you. Paul, sorry, councillor Van Meerebergen first, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Clearly, we've all seen that with this particular issue. The people certainly from the eight streets, the eight neighborhoods involved clearly want to be heard. And I think this is a very positive step. To move the the delegation meeting, to hear various delegations. To a separate meeting makes a world of sense. So I wholeheartedly support this. Clearly, this particular construction season, there's three wards directly affected. Ward ten, councillor Layman, and of course councillor Squire. But more importantly, the desire of these eight streets from these neighborhoods to be heard is overwhelming. And so we owe it to them to hear them properly and fully. So I certainly support this.
Thank you, councillor Haller.
Thank you. It was helpful to hear councillor Squire's perspective in particular. When I first started hearing councillor Close talking about changing the date, alarm bells were throwing off in my head because. It seemed like a very bad idea to move the date that everybody has committed to. You know, they know that the meeting's on the second. They're planning their schedules to be there because it's an important thing. They want to be able to participate. But based on the reaction from councillor Squire, it seems like. I don't know if the community that's very interested in this meeting already knows about this other date and they think it's fine. But he doesn't seem to have concerns with it. So that gives me some comfort. And I I do think we really need to nail down the specific timing. Right away, you know, there's no problem for me. I don't mind having a special meeting. I do think that four hours on the second. Is plenty of time to deal with this issue, even with a lot of delegations. And many of us on council have sat through quite long. Public meetings in the past. It it certainly can be done in the normal meeting timeframe. And so I don't I don't actually see a reason to move it for that reason, although I do think we have less wiggle room with the virtual meetings. It takes more setup, I think, to transition from meeting to meeting. But I do, I I am convinced by what Counselor Squire said about, you know, if we have more time, maybe there's something can be figured out in terms of what is the solution to having sidewalks and trees on these streets. You know, so if there's something that can be done in the time available, it's going to the same council meeting, so there's not really a big delay. It's still the week before the council meeting, so people have some time to see what the committee recommended and make a decision at council. And so I I think that that timing is fine if it's the fifteenth. I just wanted to recognize that it would be a change for people who have now committed. Lots of people have now committed to the second. And I just want to make sure that that's going to go over okay. Certainly, someone who had a commitment on the fifteenth that they couldn't break, they might be pretty upset if we're moving the date.
Thank you. Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. And I have a couple of questions, maybe through you to staff. I assume this meeting on the fifteenth will take place at four PM. I just want to, maybe that's not a question from to staff, but I do have a couple questions just as it relates to staff having the information at this special meeting to provide the detailed designs, to have more information provided to the community. I I just want to ask that question. And also, does that interfere with our timelines when it comes to taking down trees that we don't get into that that period of time? I think it's April first where we we can't take down trees because of nesting. Just would like staff's response.
Sure.
Thank you, Your Worship. And with respect to the timing of the meeting, as long as we hit the cycle, next cycle of council, so this will come to the same meeting of council as the March second civic works report normally would. We're fine with respect to our general tree removal and bird nesting habitat restrictions. With respect to the information that is available, these projects are in detailed design at this point. This is a new report that we have not previously provided to council. Often, these issues come up through a matter of delegation or petition as we're ready to start construction. So we're hoping that by bringing a report that identified where this this work would happen under the London Plan, it would be the opportunity to have that earlier conversation. We will have as much information as possible in terms of what we're proposing with respect to back of curb tree impacts. We certainly have all that information. We would not have full detailed design available at those meetings, but we should be able to answer most technical questions from a resident and sidewalk user experience.
Counselor.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think that's important that we have as much information about these projects at the public participation meeting. And I I just want confirmation, this will start at four PM, just finish off.
I might go to the clerk on that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Again, to clarify, this is not a public participation meeting. It's to receive delegations. I'm sorry to be picky about it, but it it makes a difference as per notice. The the council procedure bylaw indicates that civic works is held at noon. But you can certainly put four PM in this motion, and then we would hold it at four PM.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, I I would be open to either or. I would think delegation status would be more available to to people at four, but I'll leave it up to my colleagues here.
We'd probably have to go back to the mover and seconder for that, if there's any thoughts around that. And why don't we, if if we're not ready to make that decision quite yet, we can I can call on you, Counselor Close, and just ask you if you put thought to that or would like to put some thought to that, and then we can deal with it.
As committee chair, I'd prefer noon.
For four o'clock?
For noon, twelve o'clock.
For noon, excuse me. Okay. That's that's your answer, Counselor Hopkins? And any other comments or questions?
Cassidy.
No, I'm still with Counselor Hopkins. Okay, good. Counselor Cassidy, you're next.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I assume that this required a decision tonight, not 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 even talking about the change or the additional meeting. But before these people requesting delegation status were contacted and notified that they would get delegation status, this had to come here and get approved. So none of these people know yet the date. However, I I'm I'm going back to Counselor Helmer's comments about some people were made aware of the date way back when this first came up. And they were given specific timelines to have their request for delegation in by a certain date, so it could be approved by council, and then it would be heard at the next civic works committee meeting. So I I do have that little thing in the back of my head as well about people, some people may have already set aside the date. But I just want to confirm with the clerks that once we pass this tonight, anybody that is on this list will receive notice that their delegation has been approved and it will be heard at the specific date of the special meeting. I'm concerned because I do have a number of people in Ward five that have been contacting me. There is a street in Ward five. I'm not sure if that was included in Counselor Van Mirbergin's list of wards. But there are quite a few Ward five residents who are concerned for their street, and I'm not sure if any of them have requested delegation status. I know a number of them have been writing in now.
We'll confirm with the clerk.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, they will receive notification from the clerk's office if the delegation has been approved in the date and the time of the delegation.
Counselor Cassidy.
No, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we can put this to the vote.
Counselor Salih, Counselor Helmer, Counselor Van Mirbergin. Counselor Salih and Counselor Van Mirbergin. Counselor Van Mirbergin and Counselor Salih. I'll mark Counselor Salih absent.
I vote I vote yes. It's just I'm not able to hit yes on it because it's too long.
Thank you. Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thank you. Counselor Close.
Thank you. I'll put the final item on the floor, being item sixteen, being five point one, being a deferred matters list, as the mayor has declared a conflict on this one.
Sorry, I'm just going to take us back one one step. Counselor Close, and that is to vote on vote on motion as amended.
Sorry.
So we'll do that. Are you, will you move that, Counselor Close? Counselor Squire, you're second. Thank you. Any comments or questions as amended? So then we'll call the question.
Counselor Salih. Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Counselor Close.
Thank you. I will now put item sixteen, being five point one, on the floor, being the deferred matters list, as the mayor had declared a conflict.
Comments or questions? Then we'll call the question. I voted yes out of habit, clerk, and as you know, that's my. I'll just re-correct that.
Closing the vote and the motion passes thirteen with one recused.
Thank you. Counselor Close.
That concludes committee.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Chair. Now I'll turn your attention, colleagues, to eight point five, the fifth report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee. I'll call on Deputy Mayor Morgan, please.
Thank you, Worships. I'll put items one and three of the fifth report of the SPPC on the floor. Items two had both a conflict and some divided votes. I'll deal with those and its subsections separately. So I'm happy to put the disclosure and the appointment to RBC place on the floor, though. Or everything else on the agenda, I should say.
With everything else on the agenda, does anyone wish any of the items that are we're voting on to be dealt with separately? Then with the exception of the pulled items, we'll vote on those now.
Counselor Van Holst and Counselor Van Mirbergin. Counselor Van Holst. Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I've looked at the clerks for some guidance on this. My intent was to deal with three point one A, B, and C separately. However, I know some councillors have included correspondents who are willing to move motions. So I'm wondering if there's a a logical order to put it on the floor to give all the colleagues who want to move alternate motions the opportunity to do so. So I'd be happy to put any one of those items on the floor as it would most appropriately make sense because there's some order of operations to these as well.
Some advice, clerk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I would I would recommend you call the parts separately. And I would suggest you probably deal with A first because it'll make a difference on whether people and men want to put amendments forward to the unrest or it's up to you.
Sounds good to me. So I'm happy to put three point one A, which is the clause that says civic administration be directed to cease golf operations at municipally owned River Road Golf Course effective immediately to mitigate budget pressures on the municipal golf system.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Counselor Van Mirbergin.
There. Okay, got it. Thank you, Mayor. As we discussed at at committee, the fact of the matter is, this particular golf course owned by the people of London, there to serve the people of London, is a tremendous asset, a strong asset, an asset that is very valuable, particularly now in this time of COVID. This, of all times, is when it should be open. May it close at some point? Maybe. But this is not the day it should close. We've we're coming into still a significant part of COVID in our community. We're we're trying to get through this. People are yearning for recreation. As we come into spring, as we come into summer and even into the fall, this course can play, this asset can play a significant benefit to our community, to Londoners who who reside here to help them, not only physically but mentally. So here it sits. We've spent thousands in the previous year maintaining it, and yet it sat closed with no benefit, no direct benefit to the people paying the bill. We had in twenty twenty forty, almost forty thousand rounds of golf by non-members, people who walked up to the courses and said, we want to play, and they paid to play. And that was without having River Road open. So imagine if River Road was allowed to open this spring, summer, this golfing season. How many more people could benefit? How much more money could be put into the system for at least this year? A year where it can do some real good for the residents, the people of London. So I would urge that we not vote to close it this year. I would urge that we we look at this to stay open. And I'm certainly prepared, I know there are others, to move a motion that it be reopened for the twenty twenty-one golf season, where it can do the most good for the most people. Again, almost forty thousand. These are people, this is a broad swath, people, young people, older people, people who have golfed most of their life, people who have never golfed. And it's something where people are really starting to think, you know, this is a recreational activity that we can really get behind, that we would love to do because we can be outside, we're doing an activity with our friends. We can be socially distanced. It's safe. So I say again, let's leave it open for this year.
Thank you. Counselor Squire.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So I, this is an issue where I voted last week and I wanted my mind to be changed. I was open to my mind being changed in the in the week. So I engage with pretty much anybody who emailed council or me. I engage them on what they saw as the proper decision to be made. And the idea that there was some kind of consensus on what should happen, it just, there was no such thing. Some people said, don't close River Road, close one of the Thames Golf Courses, or close one of the Vanshaw Golf Courses. Some people said, please just raise taxes to pay for the golf courses. Other people said, you can raise fees at the golf courses. Others said, don't you dare raise fees at the golf courses. So the idea that there was some kind of unanimity is really challenging to me. But I also did some research in terms of how is golf doing in Canada? How is golf really doing in Canada? We know that a lot of people wanted to get out and golf during COVID. I think we all know that. Any of us who play golf know it was really hard to get a tee-off time. But to get a real look at the golf industry, you have to look a little further. And Golf Canada actually did a report of the decade prior to two thousand seventeen and what was happening with golf in Canada. They found that in that time period, that decade, a hundred and fifty-eight golf courses closed while seventeen new ones were built. Think about that. Think about how that relates to the golf industry. Nike Golf got out of golf. Phil Knight said, we're losing money in a crazy way about golf because millennials are are not playing golf. They don't like that it takes six hours or five hours to play golf. We're getting out of the golf equipment business. Calgary had to deal with the situation of their golf courses. They had eight golf courses, and they're still dealing with this decision. So the first thing they did was they were losing money. And they took the position that was the same as London, which is golf should pay for golf. We don't want to lose money on golf courses. They ended up closing a couple of golf courses. So they closed two because of that. They then went on, and now they said, well, let's divest the rest of our golf course courses to the private sector. Let's have them buy the courses and operate them. They have almost no takers to buy the golf courses. Almost nobody wants to buy golf courses. So the situation we're facing in London, regardless of any decisions we've made in the past, are not unusual. This the the whole trend of golf courses not being as busy and not being profitable, that's that's happening all over North America, quite frankly. You know, I saw a golf course, I saw one person said to me, well, you should look at other golf courses that have closed in the London area, like the one that went bankrupt. And I said, well, wait a second here. You're you're saying we should keep a golf course open, and one in the private sector recently went bankrupt. So this idea that everything will change if we keep the golf course open for a year, I'm I'm having trouble with that. What is keeping the golf course open for a year going to do? Is it going to change the inevitable decision we have to make? Is it going to change the inevitable decision we have to make down the road? I'm not convinced of that. So we can talk all we want about mistakes in the past and I quite readily said, probably we didn't do a good job in the past. Most of us weren't here when decisions were made in the past. But I think right now there's some certain realities about the golf course business that are really, really challenging. And I think the question for me at the end of the day is, do I want to protect the, the golf course industry? In London from a public point of view by maintaining Fanshawe and Thames, or do I want to risk that? In a very real way by keeping River Road open for another one or two years. So when my colleagues say, keep it open for another year, I, I'm still challenged. What is that going to do other than delay a decision that I'm afraid we're going to have to make in the future?
Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And just before I make a comment on A, I would like to take this opportunity. Just to ask, thanks staff for this report coming forward. I know it was not very easy. We've all received a lot of emails. A lot of concerns. And I, I am going to signal out Mr. Stafford. I know of the work and his commitments. To the industry is there. It's most likely been a very difficult and challenging time for him. And I just want to thank him and the rest of staff for their patience and understanding. As we as a council deal with this issue and for me, it has been a very difficult issue. I think we almost set ourselves up. Most likely back in 2018 when we purchased the property. And the, at one point eight and, and here we are today. Looking at selling it. I did not support A at committee and I'm still not going to support aid. I, I do feel strongly that. We shouldn't rush any into any decisions when it comes to. Selling off the public asset here during a pandemic. I, I do think there is some opportunities and time. To answer Counselor Squire's question about what is it going to result in and, and I know there were comments to committee about kicking the can down the road. Sort of speak, if keeping River Road open for 2021 will probably lessen the, the loss that we're going to have in. In, in the golfing industry with the rest of our courses as well. We really don't know what 2021 is going to look like and I, I do think this is a difficult situation. And there's no right or wrong. For me, it's strictly about just pausing, taking our time, really understanding. This audit report came prior to COVID and here we are going almost into one year of COVID and the changes, not only. To our golf court courses, but to recreation, recreation and our parks is something that we have seen a change in. And I, I think that will continue as we get out of COVID. But again, I'm not going to be supporting. The recommendation to cease golf operations at River Road right now. So. That's my comment.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. And just speaking to A, as I may have some comments on other sections as we get to those. I did support it at committee and I'm going to support it again tonight. And I'm going to actually pick up where Counselor Hopkins was and express my sincere, sincere thanks to both Mr. Stafford and Mr. McGonigal, who have. Put up with a great deal of questions for me over the last, well, month on this, both before and since SPPC. As I've thought about different ideas. Because like Counselor Squire, I, I've engaged with as many people from the golf community and from the community at large as I could. And you know, frankly, I heard people say, don't stop there. Sell all three. Get out of the golf business. Don't compete with the private sector. I personally tend to think that having some appropriate level of municipal asset in golf is still a good idea. So I, I wasn't necessarily open to that. I heard, keep, keep it open on weekends only and just charge green fees. Don't let members play there. Just give the casual golfers a, a chance to use that course. But if we're going to do that, we have to maintain the course all week long. So there's no way to, to, you know, ensure that we're going to not realize just as big a loss next year. There have been many ideas and they've been wonderful about them. And I also want to say, you know. To the people who, who care passionately about this. I, I do understand where you're coming from and I've seen the same sort of reaction. In my own circles in the hockey community when arena closures have had to be decided on. People get attached to locations and spaces and it's tough to say goodbye to them. But I will also say what's not okay. When you contact a counselor or in particular, when you're speaking about a member of staff to be. Insulting and, and abusive and, and calling, you know, staff incompetent, calling counselors incompetent, calling them much worse things than that. It's really disappointing that's, that's where some of this discussion has devolved to. And I just want to state that publicly. It's not okay to say that somebody's incompetent because you don't like the decision they're making. It's not. So stop. A decision has to be made on the future of River Road. And it's a decision that's been 11 years in the making since this discussion began with the Fontana Council. And I said this at committee and I'll say it again. That, that council provided a one-year reprieve and we got a one-year spike in use and then numbers dropped back down to where they were. I've yet to hear any reason that one year is going to make a difference. There's a lot of assumptions about what this summer is going to bring with COVID, but we don't know. I can tell you that there are baseball and soccer associations preparing for both a plan A, seasons as usual, and a plan B, modified play with COVID. Last summer, those weren't even on the table. They are going to be available to people for whom that's the first sport of choice. So I don't think that we can presume that the demand is going to be what it was last year. We are going to have 10-minute tee times, not 12, where we started last year. We are going to have a longer season. It's not going to open late like it did last year. So there will be more tee times available at the remaining courses and we will still have at the end of the day, 72 holes of golf available to golfers in London. So I am going to support this. And I also think that when we move forward with this, and I know that we will get to part B later. But it's really important. We recognize that golfers did pay for this. And that we need to make that reinvestment back into the other courses so that they continue to enjoy golf in the municipality of London for a long time to come.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Turner, please.
Thank you, worship. Through you, really quick question. To staff, what, what is the divestment plan if we approve the motion as it is tonight? Part of it is, is to try and sell the facility. I'd imagine part of that might be sale as a golf course. The other might be as developable land or otherwise. If, if we're looking to sell it as a facility, then we probably need to upkeep it until, and during the meantime. And, and would there be costs incurred in the interim? Or would we just stop any work at that site from this point forward?
Mr. Stafford.
Thank you. And through you, your worship. We'll have to work with realty on that and it's a sale for highest and best value and I'll let. Ms. Barbone discuss that a little bit further, but depending on that plan, there would be a, a thought of maintaining the greens. Last year we maintained more of the property. If, if we had to get back into it with fairways and bunkers and, and greens and some other components of, of the facility. Our plan would be to, to keep the greens. Those are the, the biggest asset and, and certainly. If someone was buying it as a golf course, that would be, would be something that they would be looking to have. So that's, that's the plan at this point.
Counselor Chair.
Thank you. Here's my concern and this is the reason I asked it. I'm, I'm very supportive of disposing of the asset. I hear Counselor Hopkins' point and I philosophically have a hard time selling off public assets. But this is a public asset that's losing us money and allows us. Well, actually erodes our ability to maintain the public assets that we do have. So we, we have a fairly large capital liability and we need to be able to shore up that, that which we do have. So. But as we saw last year, by not operating River Road, we had over $300,000 in costs to maintain it. And, and rather than getting any revenue on that, which if follow indications were from previous years, we probably would have seen a deficit. Of maybe 20 to $70,000. So I think we lost a lot more money by choosing not to operate it than by, than had we chosen to operate it. The same holds if we choose to just stop operating it, and this season. And there's, there's maintenance costs for it until such time as we find a buyer. And we have no revenues, just expenses. We may or may not recover that in the price of sale. But, but that's a bit of a gamble. Is it possible to maintain operations, including golfing at the site until such time as we sell it? It, it, it shows it as a viable operation and probably showcases it a little better for sale because it is actually working. Rather than, than otherwise. I guess, I, I just like staff's thoughts on that because. I, I do support selling. Strangely, I really didn't support postponing a year, but. If we're going to lose money because we're postponing or because we're, we're just stopping operations, but still have to maintain it, that's a concern for me.
Perhaps you could respond to, to all of those queries, Mr. Stafford, please.
Thank you. And through you, your worship. Our, our recommendation is, is the one we presented to you. There is a, there is a, a time period here and we'd have to work with realty on the, on the disposition of land as if we get to that in, in. Recommendation B. As I mentioned, there is a cost. It'll be, it'll be less than last year because we'll be looking to. Maintain at a different, much different level because we're not anticipating opening. Last year was a temporary closure and, and we didn't know where this would go. So it'll be a much, a much less level of maintenance, but there will be maintenance costs in order to keep going forward here.
Counselor Turner.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stafford. That didn't make me feel a lot more comfortable. I, if, I'd be interested to have a sense of the quantification of what a lot less than, than $315,000 would be and. And if we have a serious prospect of recovery of those maintenance costs or if it's more saleable because it's a functional and maintained course.
Mr. Stafford.
Thank you. And through you, your worship. Our estimates are around a third of what that number was as far as maintenance last year because of the, the need to spray greens and keep those alive. And we think those would be. Attractive if, if the property is, is indeed looked at as a golf course for sale. There would be potential other. Incendials that come up, but that, that's the, the estimate as far as keeping greens going. If we determine that that's not the, the best use and where we go, then we would cease that and. There wouldn't be that maintenance cost either, but we're not at that stage yet and we'd have to go through section B and go through our realty division to see where we're at from there.
Counselor Chair.
Okay, thanks. To some other key points through the discussion about the question of golf pain for golf and some of the, the residents who had written us saying, why don't we do that with hockey or why don't we do that with, with soccer and swimming? For me, it's, it's a question of the price of entry, right? Thirty-five bucks for a round at, at a, at a lower time. Is not exactly the most accessible to those who may have a less disposable income, whereas our services in hockey and. And swimming and soccer and tennis and all of those things are far more accessible to more people. And I think that's where, where the line becomes a little different for me. Counselor Squire raised some interesting research too. About why were, were some of those courses sold? So many courses sold and very few built. There's a few reasons. One is the one that, that he mentioned. Another one is the incredible value of the land that golf courses sit on. And in so many places, they've actually been developing golf courses into, into housing. And we're seeing that already in some of the private courses in London too, up in the north end of the city. So this isn't. Foreign or strange to, to the, the discussion about how golf courses are handled and what their future might be. So. I'm, I'm supportive of ceasing operations. I'm worried about the, the carrying cost until we sell it. But I, I'll support the recommendation that was put forward at SPPC last week.
Thanks very much. Do we have any other colleagues who wish to comment on this? Counselor Van Holst.
Yes, thank you, your worship. And I appreciate the comments so far. However, I'm going to vote against, go to vote against this or perhaps make some other motion. But this is the largest recreational facility in my ward. So I'm. Concerned about, concerned about its loss. It may be a little bit like having a doctor say, well, we should amputate. And I'm of the opinion that I want a second opinion. So looking for that, I think is, is one of the reasons that we might want to have this operate for another year. I know there's. Groups who have been suggesting there are other ways to go about this. Counselors, I sent a communication to, to you. About a, a motion I would like to pass. However, it was, it's fairly operational really. And earlier today I said, you know, we shouldn't get into operations, but. My, my feeling is that golf is never really paid for golf because, because of the fact that we haven't been able to cover the, the capital expenditures. But I think for a municipality, there's other ways that we could be guaranteeing the revenue. I, I think with our memberships. We only gain enough to cover our costs. And then with our unlimited memberships, we're actually losing money on, on a unit round of golf. And then, and then that's made up for by the, by the people who are, are non-members. So. We, we do need a different model no matter what. And we, we determined this at the last meeting and many people said it is that we're, we're not out of the woods if, if we go. If, if we don't have a better idea. And I, I guess maybe I'll ask staff through the chair. If they're going to be able to, if they would be able to report back to us on, 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 on a strategy that's, that's going to make golf more sustainable and. When might they be able to do that?
Mr. Stafford.
Thank you. And through the chair, if we were directed to do that, we could bring back that sustainability model. Certainly with, with fee structures, we bring fee structures annually to council and. We could bring that back with marketing plans and sustainability models.
Counselor Van Holst.
Okay, thank you. Well, I would certainly like to see that because. There's, I, I think there is a potential for golf to pay more, for more of golf and, and we're going to need that. So the other, the other concern I have is that. There's the possibility of having other entities run the, run the golf system in, in different ways. If we just engage them kind of like we do. With our, our water boards, we hire, we own the assets, we hire somebody else to run it and they can do so in. With some advantages. And you may have gotten an email. I know I got one about some. Group wanting to come forward with a business plan and they said to me, can you just give us two weeks to. Put forth a, a business plan for that. And I, that's what I would like to see happen. I want to see what these new ideas. I want to see what the plans our staff might have. And I want to see what other groups may come forward with because there may be a way to save this course. And frankly. I believe that a golf course is the, is the best use for the entire property. We don't know what we're going to be able to develop on that. And so much of it can't be developed that this really is a good use. And the people who golf on there think that it's, it's a great thing. So. I'm. Knowing that something like this would come forward, really, I would like to refer this decision to stop it for a, a time period, but I'm also. decision to stop it for a a time period. But I'm also uh, you know, I also want to ask staff, how long might uh we be able to delay uh to the say, the next SPPC meeting or the one after that in order to see another business case come forward from outside so that we'd have a chance to to look at it?
We need a secondary for that.
So I I'm sorry, that was a question to staff.
I'm sorry. I thought that was a referral, but all right. Uh is that's kind of okay. Uh, Mr. Stafford, do you have a comment on that?
Uh thank you. Through you, your worship. Uh we believe our recommendation is part of that sustainability plan uh for the golf system and uh the different models of fee structures and uh marketing and items that Counselor Van Holst are are looking at are are similar to items we brought back uh many years ago. And we could we could follow that as uh as part of the next phase of the sustainability of the other properties.
Okay.
Counselor Van Holst, thirty thirty seconds, but please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sure your worship, my my question and and it it will help my motion for referral. Uh how lo- how long we could we de- delay in order to get another uh an outside group to bring us a business plan? Would it be uh one cycle or two cycles? How much time could we give another organization?
Mr. Stafford.
Uh through the chair, we haven't done any work on any unsolicited proposals or or different management uh organization plans. I I couldn't even estimate what that would be or or who that would be.
Counselor? Are you looking towards going to a referral now?
I guess uh I guess I have to do that then. So I'd like to refer this decision to the next SPPC meeting uh because I I've been told that uh some new business models would be presented to us. And and I think I'd like to I'd like to see what those are before we make this decision.
Do you have a secondary?
I don't know.
I don't know either. Is there a secondary? Counselor uh Van Mirberg, and thank you, there is. So on the referral, I'll s- I'll start a list and ask if people have any additional or new comments they wish to make. Please go ahead. Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Um, your worship, on the referral, I I I I'm not supportive of this. I I also have some concerns about the process that we would follow for the disposition of land and taking unsolicited offers in this way. And I think if council wants to consider that, they should certainly get some advice from our staff on how to do that in the most appropriate way so that people could actually legitimately submit unsolicited unsolicited offers to the city because uh there is only there's a right way to do it, and there is a wrong way to do it. And I certainly wouldn't want to cross the line into the wrong way. So I don't know if there's support for this sort of referral. I'll be voting against it. But if there is, I would certainly suggest that, you know, we would want to be very careful about the way we took unsolicited offers.
Thank you. Counselor Hopkins.
Uh yes, your worship, and I um I'm not exactly sure of what the referral is going to accomplish. I am. And I've heard from Counselor Van Holst the importance of having um a report back from staff coming up with different models, opportunities to look at controlling our golf revenues. I am supportive of that uh recommendation to get a report back. I guess we could ask that, and I'd be very supportive of that. But I'm not sure if we refer this back to get um um a a a business plan in place for our next SPPC meeting. I have um concerns about that, but very supportive of some kind of a report coming back to us to look at um golf revenues in general.
Thank you. Any other comments on the motion to refer? Seeing none, we'll Counselor Van Holst, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So I haven't I have not yet commented on the actual motion. Uh but I I do have a communication saying that I believe the council may be rushing a decision which will impact the local golf system forever. I hope you'll consider putting forward a motion which would delay this vote for two weeks to give our organization a chance to present a solution to save River Road. So um there's there's a communication. Uh I I know I've chatted with a a number of groups and and people that think there there uh may be uh ways to do this. I'd like to s- I'd like to see those, at least at least hear them. And like Counselor Hopkins, I I think we may be rushing things. Uh this is a very irrevocable decision. Uh once we decide to close it and certainly or or sell it, we 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 can't have it back. So um there's my there's my comments. And you've seen the reason why I put forward the motion. So I think at this point, I'm happy to just vote on it, your worship.
Thanks very much. Any other comments on the referral? Seeing none, we will call the question.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Helmer, Counselor Kaibaga.
I vote no.
Closing the vote and the motion fails, three to ten, with one abstained.
That puts us call, uh thank you, uh that puts us back to the main motion. Uh are there any other speakers uh to the main motion? That have not already spoken to this. Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries nine to four with one recused.
I'll be happy to put the second um component of uh item three point one on, which is B, Civic Administration B, directed to initiate the disposition of prop- uh property process in compliance with municipal council's sale and other disposition of land policy.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Counselor Hopkins.
Yes, your worship. I um did not support uh B at committee. And I do uh have an amendment proposed uh for B. And I have had the clerk circulated to everyone. I hope everyone has read it. And for uh the public, I I will read the amendment. I think uh we've heard loud and clear from from uh not only golfers, but from Londoners about uh
Sorry, I apologize, Counselor. I wonder if you could read the amendment first, and then if you wish to speak to it after we have a secondary. I'd be pleased to do that.
Well, I guess um I I'm looking for a secondary then before I can read the amendment.
Well, I think you can read the amendment, and then we'll see if there's a secondary, or we can ask the clerk to do so. Go ahead, clerk.
That part B of item three point one of the fifth report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee be amended to read as follows. Prior to the initiation of the disposition of property process in compliance with municipal council's sale and other disposition of land policy, the civic administration be directed to make the necessary arrangements to hold a public participation meeting before a future meeting of SPPC to receive input with respect to potential options for use of the land related to the River Road Golf Course in order to ensure that all options are evaluated through the disposition of property process.
Thank you. And you'll move that, Counselor Hopkins, since it was just seconded by Counselor Van Mirberg? And uh those who wish to speak, please, Counselor Hopkins.
Yes, if I may, your worship. And uh I think this is a bit of a compromise. I think we've heard loud and clear uh not only from golfers, but from Londoners, the importance of the green space that uh they own. Uh they are the key stakeholders. And to uh have a a a public participation uh meeting to discuss uh opportunities for this this land is something uh that I welcome that conversation. Uh like Counselor Van Holst, he spoke of a business plan, uh opportunities to maybe keep it as a golf course. But there are many other opportunities that we've heard from Londoners. The uh the parkland, sort of even keeping the river park as a uh a park like Springbank is to the West End uh a a river park in in the East End is also an opportunity. Understanding that a lot of this land as well is on flood plain, and maybe there is about twelve acres that can be developed. And obviously, there may have to be some re- remade remediation, sorry. I think I'm getting tired here. Um to be done, having that conversation is important uh to hear from Londoners. And I I I hope my colleagues will support a a public participation to uh discuss ideas and have opportunities to see where this goes, given the fact that we do have a uh a policy in place. I understand that. Um it's it's stated in i- 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 in the recommendation, but having that uh conversation with the community is also important. And I'm hoping my colleagues will support it.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Lewis.
Uh thank you, your worship. And while I appreciate while the count where the council is coming from, uh I won't be supporting this. Um and I'll I'll be cr- crystal clear as to why. Uh I think that that the amendment to B um actually is connected to C. And I have made uh my commitment to golfers and 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 to those who have been concerned about this. One of the reasons I'm supporting the ceasing of golf operations at River Road and proceeding with the disposition of the land is that the part C, which is the important piece to me, is that the proceeds from this, partial or full, go into the Gulf Reserve Fund. We need that injection to keep the other two courses viable, to get them back on track uh with capital expenses. And I think that uh we are doing a disservice uh to everyone involved uh if we deviate from our policy on the disposition now, uh because deviating from that also potentially impacts C.
Thank you. I have Counselor Van Holst next, please.
Uh thanks again, your worship. The sale of our golf course uh is is certainly an an easy step to take, but it may not be the most savvy. And I would, having already heard many residents uh ask that uh they be involved in discussions of what might be done with this, I I I would like to let them have some input first. And so uh I'm I'm happy and would support uh this this motion. I hope other people uh will as well. Uh like we are doing with the with the sidewalks, there there's still many people are concerned about this this property in the East End and uh and value our green spaces and just don't want them turned over to the public sector um if that if that if that's what happens. So I think before uh I send staff off to figure out what the best value is for the property, I would like to have our own residents chime in on what they think the best value is. And uh to me, that would be just better government. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other colleagues wish to speak to this? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Counselor Kaibaga? Counselor Kaibaga? Closing the vote and the motion is lost, three to ten with one recused.
Deputy Mayor?
Uh thank you, your worship. Uh I will now put uh part C uh of three point one on the floor, which says, notwithstanding the municipal council's sale
Just bear with us, uh Deputy Mayor, clerk.
I can't hear what the clerk's saying. Oh, yes, as recommended, sorry.
So we're putting part B as recommended, colleagues?
Yes, sorry, back to the main motion. I I realized that was an amendment.
Yeah, okay. Comments or questions with respect to uh part B? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Counselor Kaibaga?
Um I voted like three times, but I don't know why it's not uh going through. I vote yes.
Thank you. Closing the vote and the motion carries nine to four with one recused.
Deputy Mayor?
Uh I think I can put three point one, part C on, uh which states, notwithstanding the municipal council's sale of major assets policy, the proceeds from any partial or full disposition of the River Road Golf Course lands be allocated to the municipal Gulf Reserve Fund.
Comments or questions?
Oh, and then I'll put the it being noted part on too. Yes, um so the part C and the it being noted clause, which is the remainder of uh what's left in three point one.
Thank you. Comments or questions, colleagues? Counselor Turner?
Really briefly, I voted against this at committee, uh mostly because I I think it's probably appropriate to to follow the uh the policy that we have. And if that's the most appropriate place for it to go, great. But if it's more appropriate for those funds to go someplace else, then I I don't want to be bound by that. But I recognize that there's probably broad support for this of the rest of council.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the vote.
Counselor Sully?
I vote yea, Counselor Sully.
Closing the vote and the motion carries twelve to one with one recused.
Uh that should be the uh the balance of the SPPC report, the fifth report.
Thank you. If you want to sit for three seconds, and then we'll call you back up for the report of first report of the audit committee.
I was sat so fast, it looked like I didn't even move. Um so I'll put the entire audit committee report on the floor. Uh colleagues have that report before them, unless there's anything anyone would like pulled.
Does anyone wish anything dealt separately? Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Counselor Hopkins? Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thank you, colleagues. There are no deferred matters, uh but we do have an inquiry, and I'll call on Counselor Squire. There are no deferred matters, but we do have an inquiry and I'll call on Counselor Squire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to provide very short background of why I'm, I'm asking for what's being asked for. And it does appear in the agenda at page 75. What I'm seeking to do is, given what's happened in the past short period of time, which is accusations and suggestions with regard to our procurement policy being made public, I think it's crucially important that council, in its oversight responsibility and in order to be able to properly perform its governance function, have some idea of the substance of the city position with regard to these accusations, which would be of course done in camera. The challenge is, for me as a counselor, is that at this point in time, I think certain things have been said in public that I am concerned about. But I'm concerned about them from the point of view, they're being made against this corporation and this corporation's employees. And they, council should be fully aware, which I expect we will be made fully aware, that these, these accusations are unsubstantiated. And we should have confidence in the ability of our administration to carry out the important functions of procurement. This request for information is not to second guess legal action. And the, the strategy of legal action is to support administration in their properly exercised functions as the, the guardians of the procurement process. And so I'm asking that that report be done in council, in camera. And, and that will be the end of it. So it's a two-step process. And the first is to request, is the step two. I understand we no longer need a change in order. So step two is the inquiry. And it sets out quite clearly what is being asked for. And I'm prepared to move that. And I think I have a secondary. And I don't intend on saying anything further about this, what I'm doing, except to make the second motion if I'm granted leave. But for me, this is a very important issue and I hope it is for us to cancel.
Before we go to the, we have a secondary, but I'm going to go to the clerk.
It's you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that the only motion need is, needed is leave now to put the additional reason to go in closed session.
All right, that's fine. I will, I will just merely move that. And I think the secondary is still prepared to second that.
Secondary by Counsel Lewis. With that, we will call the vote.
Counsel Turner? Closing the vote and the motion carries, 14 to zero.
The reason will then be added to the reasons that we go into closed session. There are no emergent notion, motions, so I will move now to bylaws. And I'm looking for a mover and secondary for the introduction, first reading of bills 64 through 83. Do I have a mover? Counselor Van Mirberg is seconded by Counsel Lewis, thank you. We'll call the vote.
Counsel Lewis? Closing the vote and the motion carries, 14 to zero.
We're doing bills 64 through 83. A mover, please. Counsel Lehman, seconded by By the way, I only have a few people on the screen, so I'm, so I'm looking for a secondary. If you screen up, we can see if you wish to second this motion. Counsel Halmer, thank you very much. Any discussion? Counselor Van Mirberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill number 76, it deals with the widening of Southdale Road from Pine Valley through to Farnham. An excellent, good news story. So many of us in the area have been waiting for this. It's desperately, desperately needed. The only downside is we were hoping it would go further. But at least it's a start. So good news.
So noted, thank you very much. Any other discussion? Then we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 14 to zero.
For third reading and enactment of bills 64 through 83, I'll look for a mover. Counsel Turner, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 14.
Thank you, colleagues. There are three addresses, one from SPPC and one from Plan Environment and one added item from the inquiry. Clerk, I wonder if I could ask you just to clarify for the benefit of the public, what we're going to be doing next?
Through Mr. Mayor, yes, we'll be looking for a motion to go in closed session to deal with those matters the mayor just reviewed. And just for the purpose of the public, I'll read the additional reason that resulted from the inquiry raised by Counselor Squire, which is a matter pertaining to advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose and pertaining to personal matters about identifiable individuals, labor-related including communications necessary for that purpose with respect to the statement of claim from CLC Tree Services Limited.
Thanks very much. Do I have a motion to go into closed session? Counsel Cassidy, seconded by Counselor Van Holst. We'll call the question.
Counsel Hopkins? Closing the vote and the motion carries, 14 to zero.
We'll be coming back into public session once we have concluded our closed session. With that, colleagues-